All right. Order the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will go, sorry. We'll go to the manager for announcements and instructions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the January 16th Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are attending virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the Zoom, excuse me, members attending the Zoom platform are asked to remain muted to prevent any ambient noise from disruption of the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or their comment. And secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And also announce at this time that we had an executive session on January 10th on legal matters and personnel. And moving on, we don't have any proclamations this evening, so we'll move to public input, and this is an opportunity for anyone to present comments to the board on items not on tonight's agenda. I'll look first to the room, see none, we'll look online, and I am not seeing any, so we will move on to approval of the minutes, and we have three sets of minutes. Were there any changes needed to any of those? And if not, I'll take a motion to, yes?
Just on the minutes from the second, the motion, the table did not, or the second did not require a vote, so that it said it passed unanimously, it wasn't...
Okay, so we can make that...
Strike that, that's it.
Yep. Very good. Any other changes? And if not, I'll take a motion to adopt those minutes.
Ms. Omari, still moved.
There a second?
This is Matt, the second.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And we don't have any ABC reports tonight. Under Special Reports and Acknowledgements, under Diversity, Equity, and Inclusionary Initiatives and Acknowledgements, we have Religious Freedom Day on January 16th and International Holocaust Remembrance Day on January 27th. So we'll move on to COG and Regional Committee Reports, and up first is Executive Committee.
So, yeah, we met today. Just went through the agenda. The only thing I would add, we did receive the retirement of Eric Nordberg. So everyone has been notified, and we were told at the time of our meeting that that would be public this evening, so look forward to some action by the board on that general forum real soon.
Okay. All right, questions for Jeremy on that meeting? All right, not seen any. Up next is Climate Action and Sustainability Committee.
Yeah, so we had our first meeting last week. Everything, I think, went well to kick off the year. I thought one of the things that everybody should be privy to is the fact that went ahead and took, carved out some time in the standing agenda for other committee reports, not just COG-related or climate action-related. So if folks like SCASDE, for example, have something that they want to share with us, there is now time in that agenda to go ahead and do that. So that would be one of the highlights from that meeting.
Okay, interesting. All right, questions for Matt on that report? All right, I'm not seeing any. And then Finance Committee, also Matt.
All right, that'll be me again. So I think, again, kicked off the year, beside electing officers, et cetera, you'll see in the report, one of the keys that I wanted to bring everybody's attention to is really, because we saw a little, we saw the budget kind of overrun last year, right? Greater than the cap that we anticipated, et cetera. One of the things that the chair, as well as others in that committee, put forward was the idea that all of us in our respective committees in COG really have to, you know, as we do, but pay close attention to the things that are being asked, so that we can say, as it was so bluntly put, essentially say no prior to things making its way to finance for approval. So it really is going through things with a fine-tooth comb, and that was encouraged by everybody within that meeting to go ahead and at least share that information with folks that might be representing them, and also act as a conduit for those in the Finance Committee back to their respective townships and sharing information with the elected officials there so that they can, again, advocate for a balanced budget and everything from that standpoint. Those, again, would be the highlights from that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Matt on Finance? Okay, well, that's great. I'm glad to hear that that conversation was moving forward and encouraged, because that's, we had really stressed that at the end of the year last year, and so thanks for moving that forward. Budget is a year-long process, so requires attention at all times, so thank you for that. Then we have the Human Resources Committee.
So, yeah, we, in Human Resources, we did approve the job description for a senior transportation planner, primarily would be a grant specialist. And then we also did touch base on future activities, pointing out some things that Matt had mentioned occurred in finance, looking at some of those broader implications from, do you have the capacity of staff time when asking to take on additional things? But then I also brought up, also considered a long-term financial implications of any of those decisions, because when we are in our committees, we are touching on things that are going to be very costly, so just being mindful of the sustainability of that going forward.
That's great. Thank you for that. Questions for Jeremy on HR? And not seeing any. And Lynn Houston, Community Infrastructure, nothing to add to my report that was in the agenda. It was a good meeting. We did discuss the update to the comprehensive plan quite extensively. That was probably the main focus of the meeting. Questions on that committee? Okay, so move to Staff Reports, and up first is the Manager's Report. If you had anything to add or highlight from that?
I do not. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the manager? Patty, did you have a question?
Sorry, yeah, I just wanted to, back to the COG reports, I wanted to let you know that we had Parks Capital meeting, and basically it was just a reorganization, and Dustin Best was elected chair, and Bruce Lloyd was vice chair, and nothing was really discussed other than just a wish list from Parks Capital, but that was about it.
Thanks, Patty. Questions for Patty on Parks Capital? When does Parks Capital meet again, Patty? If you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'd have to look it up.
Because I didn't think that was monthly, so I was just curious. I'll check. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, it was sort of a loose thing, and I know that we're scheduling some joint meetings with Parks Authority.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Staff Reports, and up next was the Chief of Police Report, which was included, if you have anything to...
Yes, nothing to add, more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Patrick? Not seeing anything. Thanks for all of that information that was included. There's a lot in there, so much appreciated. And next is the Public Works Director's Report, which was also included.
Oh, I'm a suit, I have a written report, nothing to add, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Madriker? All right, I'm not seeing anything. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to unfinished business. Up first is a public hearing on an ordinance of the township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 27, zoning Part 7, supplemental regulation, section 716, workforce housing by repealing it and replacing it in its entirety, and we'll go to Christina Bassett, Community Planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided in the agenda is the draft amendment to the workforce housing ordinance. The current ordinance is only applicable in two zoning districts in the township, and that would be the Terrace Streetscape District and the Traditional Town Development, or TTD. No workforce units have been built since the ordinance was originally adopted. The draft amendment proposes to amend the applicability of zoning districts to include all zoning districts within the regional growth boundary, adjusting the area median income ranges for sale units, adding a for-lease unit option, and there are additional workforce housing options for the developers. The amendment would apply to any zoning district within the regional growth boundary where the township permits the development of 10 or more dwelling units, and this includes mixed-use developments. The amendment would also include additional options for the development community to meet the ordinance requirements. When workforce units are required, the applicant would have the option to build the units onsite, off-site, they could pay a fee in lieu, they also have the option of doing land donation or designating units in existing developments already. These all have to be within the regional growth boundary. The amendment provides greater flexibility to development community on other township ordinances, including open space requirements and landscape buffer requirements. These are reduced as an incentive. Since the September 19th, 2023, Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting, staff has met with regional managers and planners, as well as members of the development community, to collect input on the proposed ordinance. The consensus was reached that more regional approach to the workforce housing ordinance would be beneficial to and stakeholders where the current ordinance is being applied. There are significant issues that need to be addressed currently, though. Staff is recommending amending the workforce housing ordinance right now to address the current issues, and in 2024, begin working with regional municipalities and development community on a more holistic approach to the workforce housing in the region. So provided with the agenda packet are comments received from the workforce housing ordinance, and staff recognizes that many of these comments address the current ordinance, not necessarily the changes to the draft. Therefore, staff is recommending that these comments be included in the regional discussions that will take place later this year for coordinated regional approach to our workforce housing ordinance. Also included in the agenda, you'll see letters of support that we received from the following groups: Center County Housing and Land Trust, Habitat for Humanities, the Center County Planning and Community Development Office, SCASDE, and the Chamber of Business and Industry of Center County. The staff is prepared to review the amendments and answer any questions the board may have.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. If anyone has comments they'd like to make, I didn't, I'll go to the room first. You can come to the podium, and please state your name and your township of residence.
Good evening. My name is Chris Dockett. I'm the CFO of SNA Homes, based here in Ferguson Township. I currently live in College Township. First of all, thank you for taking the time tonight to allow our comments on the proposed amendment. There are many letters of support included in the agenda from various entities supporting workforce housing and the workforce housing amendment. I can tell you, SNA would probably write a letter of support as well, because we are in support of workforce housing. Unfortunately, the amendment as currently constructed is going to be, is going to be counter-active to what we really want to do, which is create more workforce housing. This proposed amendment does not adequately address the concerns and provide the clarity necessary to be able to submit a development plan so that workforce housing can be built. Based on reading the current amendment, there's a lot of gray areas that wouldn't even allow us to submit a development plan to have workforce housing even constructed. As you know, we've developed many parcels in Ferguson Township, obviously Fox Point, the Landings, and others. Really, those developments are workforce housing. We know how to develop it. We've done it in the past without an amendment, and we know what it takes to develop. and we know what it takes to develop workforce housing, and this current amendment is going to be a detriment to actually developing workforce housing. And what's ultimately going to happen is because development's not going to happen, it's going to drive the prices, you know, it's going to be simple supply and demand economics. It's actually going to drive prices higher for homes within Ferguson Township, because there's not going to be development for market-rate housing or for workforce housing as it is. You know, it's our understanding that this amendment is being proposed in its current form to correct an issue with one project. So our, you know, basically an AMI issue, from what we understand. Easiest way to correct that problem is to correct the two numbers in the current proposed amendment, or the current ordinance, and then work on a solution that works for everybody, both developers and the township, as opposed to approving an amendment that everybody, from a developer's standpoint, understands doesn't work, and will prevent us from putting in development plans, and fix the problem, and then we can all work together to get something together that works. You know, it's the law of unintended consequences, as we talked about at the last meeting. It's going to cause a decrease in development. You know, another thing that tends to happen, too, is just a loss of urgency. Once an amendment is on the books or a new ordinance, there's, there could be, it's human nature to have a loss of urgency to get something constructed that works for everyone, and we don't want that to happen. We obviously want to work together as quickly as possible to get something in place that works for everybody, developers and the township. When I say there's a lot of gray areas, if, the amendment that was sent around, if you look at page 100, I think it was about 161 of the PDF, you can see all of the red comments that we, our comments, were placed within the amendment. Certainly, some of those are our opinion, but a lot of that are just questions about, how do we interpret this? What does this mean? Who makes this decision? All those types of questions. It's, there are a ton of gray areas. And those comments, by the way, they're just SNA's comments. There's not comments from other developers in there. There's, I'm sure other developers have other comments and their own questions on the amendment that have not been included there. You know, and I'll say that we truly do appreciate staff spending the time to work with us. We had an over-two-hour meeting with Jenna, and Missy was there, and we got a lot done in terms of understanding where everybody fits and what works and what doesn't work, but none of that's reflected in the current proposed amendment. This is the proposed amendment from back in September, and none of the questions or comments are, you know, even the township agreed that, yes, some of this stuff needs to be clarified, is included in the current amendment. Just one example that's going to cause immediate issues. 4B of the workforce housing says it must be provided within all zoning districts. Well, numbers three and five there say structural alteration of a building with a residential component and structural alteration of a residential structure requires workforce housing to be built. There's no definition of structural alteration. If someone owns an apartment building and they move a wall two feet to create more open space on the first floor or a bigger lobby, does that automatically trigger the fact that they have to build workforce housing? If someone makes a change or an alteration, just adding a door, which is a structural change to their townhouse unit in a development that has more than 10 units, does that require the rest of the development to create workforce housing all of a sudden? I mean, this is just one question, that there's a bunch of them within the ordinance that would create problems immediately for the township upon approval, without it being clarified and further spelled out. You know, and from a developer's standpoint, just so you understand what we're saying, we couldn't even submit a development plan, you know, first and foremost, is there going to be any help from any other entities, you know, is all this, is the cost of workforce housing going to be borne by the developers? Everybody should participate in the township, because we're, developers are putting the workforce housing on the ground to bring workers that are going to benefit all the businesses in the township. From a plan perspective, just the bonus units that are provided is, I'll call it the carrot within the amendment. Well, if you have a PRD that's already planned, you may not be able to fit the additional bonus units. So how is that going to be handled? Is it going to be permitted that we get higher density to allow those units? Some PRDs that are already started have road networks. You can't change the plan, essentially. You need to use the same road network that's in place. You know, things like the decrease in buffer plannings, while they're a great idea and they're definitely going to help, they're not going to move the dial that much in terms of what it costs to develop. Fee-in-lieu, the fee-in-lieu payments currently now are required before development even begins. You know, development is a risky business. Everyone thinks that developers just put lots on the ground and build houses and, you know, everything's honky-dory. Well, I can tell you, in the last 15 years, there's a lot of developers that went out of business, because it's extremely risky and extremely expensive. You know, the fee-in-lieu, there's nothing, we couldn't even bring in a plan in, because nothing clarifies that the Board of Supervisors couldn't change the fee-in-lieu on the night of plan approval. Well, that could change a whole pro forma, make a development not tenable, or not, you know, change the economics of a development. I won't even get into price setting. There's no clarity or no indication of exactly how we're supposed to set prices as a developer, you know, and what's going to be approved by the township. Appraisal and maintenance issues. How are we supposed to handle appraisal issues when we have a house that might be $200, $250,000 less in a development than the other houses we're building? That's going to cause problems for people that aren't buying workforce housing. They're going to have to come up with a larger down payment. None of that's been addressed. Land donation, great idea, right? We can, if we don't want to build it, we can provide the land. Well, there's only a certain amount of zoned land within the regional growth boundary right now, and it's tough to find land that is zoned exactly the same, which is what is required. So is the Board of Supervisors willing to rezone land for that, for that purpose? I mean, these are all the things that we have no answers to, so we couldn't even bring a land development plan forward. You know, these are just a few of the high-level examples. As you can read in there, there's pages and pages of comments. And the other thing that's important to understand here, too, is that this ordinance is going to be in effect for years to come. Well, we need to make sure that it's clear so that the people that are here five, 10, 15 years from now know how to interpret it, both developers, the public, and the board itself, and township staff. So all these things are important, and reasons why we feel that, you know, the amendment as it's currently crafted doesn't work. You know, you know, one of the only reasons that was given as to why, excuse me, as to why, what was the problem with delaying the plan, or delaying the ordinance at the time it was delayed, was that, well, someone could bring a plan in that wouldn't be, you know, the new ordinance wouldn't be in effect for that new plan if someone brought it in. Well, I can tell you, it's been four months, and to my knowledge, no one's brought in a plan. I know we haven't. You know, if we really wanted to, we could have brought a plan in to try and beat the ordinance, but that's not why we're here. We want to work together to find an ordinance that works. So, you know, the prospect of someone potentially bringing in a plan shouldn't be a reason to just pass an ordinance to get it on the books. You know, I just want to thank you again for your time, and once again, we just request that this ordinance not be passed, this proposed ordinance in its current form, and that the current ordinance is just modified with the two or three numbers that need to be changed for AMI to be put in effect that will help the project that's already under development, and then we can work together with staff over the coming months to come up with an ordinance that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll stay in the room here first for other comments on this item, and if you have comments, I'd ask you to please make your way up to the podium. If there are none.
Good evening. Thank you for having this meeting, and my name is Ara Kervanjan. I'm a local developer here as well. I represent HFL Corporation and a number of affiliates. We develop multifamily, market rate, as well as affordable housing. The affordable housing that we develop is under a company, which you might be familiar with, it's called Progress Development Group. We've developed projects here in Ferguson Township and two other townships, College Township, including the Borough. I just came up just to echo the comments that Chris made as a developer. We, maybe we haven't marked up the ordinance to add to what Chris had put in there, but I'm very familiar with the comments and agree wholeheartedly with all of the comments that he's made. We did, though, just before the holidays, have a meeting. As Christina alluded to, we came in as developers and voiced our concern, and at that meeting, the thought and understanding we had was to have a collaborative effort by a number of developers here to understand the real-world impact of an ordinance such as this, and what that would do to the housing development as a whole. Again, understand that, like SNA, we developed affordable housing in this community, and we're very proud of what we're doing, and we have learned a few things. The benefit that this municipality or this township has is we are local developers, and we do care as much as SNA does, and we want to continue developing, but this ordinance, as it's written right now, makes it extremely challenging, and will set us back many, many years. The comment we heard is that this is only a placeholder in order for us to meet collaboratively this year and come up with an ordinance, and we're willing to do that. We haven't submitted a plan either within the last four months since we've learned of this ordinance, and we're willing to work and make it work, because that way we can continue developing. Otherwise, it will stagnate the future of what we see happening in Ferguson Township. Thank you.
Thank you. And staying in the room here, if there are any other comments, please make your way up to the podium and provide your name and township of residence. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Poole of SNA Homes. I attended the September 19th meeting back when. I thought, we presented a lot of reasons, causes, et cetera, and you guys did not adopt the ordinance. I thought when we left here, the ask of the board was to meet, to get together, to work on how we can create an ordinance that makes sense for everyone. We had that meeting. It was the only meeting we actually had, and I think the consensus there was it would take six to nine months to create something that worked for everyone. And so my, you know, and I'm not going to go through all the reasons I went through last time. I've been doing this a long time, and if you're looking at developments that happened in Ferguson Township, we've probably done most of them. We really do understand development. My question is, is that why are such, why is there such a rush to pass this ordinance that doesn't work? I can guarantee you, we can't, you know, SNA, I can speak for SNA only, and that involves some of the developments, you know, around here, we won't be able to develop. And that means we won't be able to develop housing or workforce housing. And I don't understand, I don't understand why. In your narrative, your narrative says, in the, it says, however giving developments where the current ordinance is being applied to, there are significant issues that need to be addressed now. Talk about the current ordinance. Staff is recommending amending the workforce housing ordinance now to address those issues. Why not address those issues for the, because it sounds to me like there's a sense of urgency on your current ordinance, which applies to two areas. Why not address and solve that issue so you can actually have development that occurs outside of just workforce housing versus none? I just, I'm just missing that. I can tell you this, is that we, if you include all the land that's in the regional growth boundary, and Chris, Chris had a lot of really good comments, and so does Ara, is that why not sit down and work through this? It really doesn't take that long to make it happen. Because the end result, and I've said this before, we're going to fail because we're not, not only not going to get workforce housing, we're not going to get normal, regular housing. And I understand, you know, letters of support, I can, I think we all know about letters of support. The, all those organizations, no one supports, no one's done more affordable housing than I have. And so it's easy to get a letter, because they truly don't understand it. They understand we need workforce housing. They don't understand how you get to the workforce housing. So it's easy to write a letter saying, I support, I support it. I think everybody in this room supports it. How do you make it work? And that's been the issue. The reason why there hasn't been anything, because it hasn't worked. So why not work to make it work rather than saying, because I can, I can tell you now, I mean, honestly, and I've said this before, I'm just being, I lived in the township, I live in the township, I own a lot of land in this township. I will not be able to develop. SNA won't. I think you heard from Ara, and I think you hear from, there's only a few people really developing in that sense, from a standpoint of residential. I just, I, so my question I'd have for you to have a discussion on is that, what is the rush to include every piece of land in the regional growth boundary, when we don't really fully understand even how it works? Because I can tell you, your ordinance does not work for ourselves to take that kind of risk. The money it takes to develop today, look at, I mean, you guys understand what it costs per foot to run a road. We just can't develop. Now, because I can't afford to take the risk of not understanding something. The last thing any of you would want to do is to sign an agreement with your eyes closed and say, I just hope, I can, hope it all works. This does not work, because I don't understand a lot of it. And maybe everyone here does, but we, I do this for a living, I do it all over, not just here, all over the country. I don't understand the ordinance. There's a lot of questions in that ordinance that, and we can't afford to go in and go put millions of dollars out into a development to find out that, well, we're not sure it is, we're not sure it happens. Why not, as I'm saying, I don't understand what the rush is. If there's something very specific, then adjust that specific issue you're having, and create a new ordinance that really works so you can actually have affordable housing. So I'm not going to go over the reasons why, but I can tell you, I really do understand development, I understand the cost of it, and I just love to hear why there's such a rush to put something through that doesn't work. I'd be happy, and why, the people who really, really, really understand it, why not always agree, but as developers, we understand the cost. I mean, why not have engineers, why not have other towns, everyone, like we started to do. Actually, your idea was a great idea, but we had one meeting. And then after that one meeting, that was it. And then we, now I find it easier, the ordinance is being proposed again. And it's okay if you pass it, I'm just saying that we can't develop, and maybe somebody else can. We just, we just won't be able to do it. But I appreciate it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know you like to close the public hearing, but to make sure you understand, if you're going to, if you're going to pass something, just make sure it works. Because an ordinance that's passed that doesn't work, nothing ever happens, and it's happened in the past. And so, not here, I'm just saying in general. So be happy, really, because we agree, like I said, if you look around town, Ara, ourself, we've probably done, we've probably done the affordable housing. So we believe in it, we understand it, and we believe in workforce housing, and you can make, you can make it work, but this ordinance absolutely, I guarantee it does not work. Too many questions for us to go out there and put the money out to say, I hope this all turns out to be what we think. Now, if you guys will want to be partners with me, I'll take you. No, no. But I seriously appreciate it, but I think that, why not, I've done a lot in Ferguson Township, you can see the developments. Why not sit down with everyone and sit around that table and make it work? Start, start on the first page and work through the 30th page. Make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll stay in the room here. If there are other public comments, please make your way up to the podium. And I'm not seeing any, so we will go online. Stephanie Fost, hope I have that correct, if you'd like to unmute and give us your name and township of residence. I'm afraid we can't hear you yet.
Hi.
We're not able to hear you. If you want to try to state your name again.
We heard Patty, so we know the audio is good.
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, maybe she's just having some trouble with.
In your-
Okay, I'm here?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yeah, if you could give us your name and township of residence, please.
Sure. My name is Stephanie Fost, and I am actually a resident of Benner Township. I was actually a resident of Ferguson Township from 2006 to 2013. I apologize, I'm not able to be there this evening. We have a round of the stomach flu at my house, so I felt everyone would probably prefer I was not there in person. I have the opportunity to serve as the Director of Habitat for Humanity here in Center County, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, in case you didn't get all through 359 pages of the agenda packet this evening, I wanted to take an opportunity to read the letter that I wrote to the Board of Supervisors.
And we have a bad-
And Mrs., who's no longer with the township, operate as an individual, but the letter, I believe it's, I'm sorry?
Your connection's breaking up a little bit, and I think you're frozen again right now.
I, I'm definitely seeing you all.
Okay, we can hear you. Your picture is frozen, so if you want to take a try at reading the letter.
Sure. Dear Ms. Worgo and Board of Supervisors, I have the opportunity to serve as the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity in Center County. I want to express my comments related to lowering the area median income ranges in the ordinances within Ferguson Township. Before I walk through the details of the great need for affordable- Before I walk through the details of the great need for affordable housing, you should know who affordable housing touches. In my nearly six years with Habitat for Humanity, I've had the opportunity to spend time with our homeowners and our potential homeowners. Our homeowners have steady and dependable jobs ranging from Ferguson Township Catabus drivers of 15 years, master's educated registered dieticians at Penn State, a second grade teacher that has taught within Ferguson Township for more than a decade, and a Ferguson, oh, my apologies, a medical office professional, and a Ferguson Township retail store manager. Our homeowners earn 40% to 80% area median income. They have strong enough credit to qualify for a no interest loan through Habitat, but just do not earn enough to qualify for traditional lending. The cost of a home within Center County is out of reach for many of our friends, neighbors, and peers. In 2022, Center County Government tackled a countywide housing needs assessment. The full document can be found at the link below. I'm not going to read that to you guys. In the spring of 2023, members of the affordable housing-related public were invited to review a study of the recommendations. One specific recommendation developed by M&amp;L, a housing and community development consulting firm based in Pittsburgh, was to expand the overall supply of housing by assisting municipalities with revising municipal zoning ordinance language to encourage gentle increases in density and affordable housing set-asides. The housing need assessment dives into the details of our current housing market, but simply put, housing for those who want to live and work within our community is further out of reach for folks earning a decent wage. The proposed amendment will help address the development of affordable housing options for individuals earning up to 60% area median income as a renter and 60% to 120% are a homeowner. Habitat for Humanity International provides a variety of case studies from communities such as Broomfield, Colorado, and Austin, Texas, and other communities where zoning has seen success when the zoning applies to both rental and homeownership developments required or encouraged 10% to 20% of new homes to be priced at below market rates, and offer developer incentives or cost offsets such as density bonuses, smaller lot sizes, flexible height restrictions, or reduced parking requirements. While not a panacea for a community's overall housing needs, these policies produce affordable homes without the need for public subsidies, have an unmatched ability to locate new affordable homes in low-poverty neighborhoods, generate funding for affordable housing where developers are offered the option of contributing funds in lieu of building affordable homes on-site. Habitat for Humanity appreciates the efforts of Ferguson Township for recognizing the critical need for affordable housing and creating opportunities for affordable, attainable housing. I would also reference, one of the elements of the affordable housing study was coming up with equals across municipalities. In the last couple of years within College Township, their ordinance was finally enacted when the Aspen Heights property went in. That residence is a apartment unit, and they added one-bedroom units. They were only required, I believe, to put in 26 or 27 because of the build-out of that structure. They ended up putting in 28, and they were able to do that. And I believe at the January 2nd College Township planning meeting, I believe they stated that 25 or 26 of those are already occupied since August. So those are putting folks within those income guidelines in a property. These are folks that are graduate students, are young professionals within our community, all of the folks that we want to be able to allow to live and enjoy all of the parts of our community. Again, I apologize that I'm not able to be there tonight.
Thanks very much. Okay, other comments? I'm not seeing any more online. Any others in the room? Not seeing any others. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we could have some brief discussion unless someone is ready to make a motion at this point. I'm willing to entertain either. If someone would care to make the motion, you can feel free, and then second that we can have this discussion.
Yeah, this is Matt. I'll make a motion so we can move on to discussion.
You want to read that?
Oh, okay, the motion, sure, I will read it all here. Apologies. Sorry. Okay. I apologize for one second there.
That's all right.
Recommend a motion that the Board of Supervisors move to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 27, zoning Part VII's Supplemental Regulations, Section 716, workforce housing by repealing it and replacing it in its entirety.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Thaddeus, second.
Thanks. Let's move to discussion. And you can start on this side. Jeremy?
And bear, bear, bear with me, I lost like everything, so I have only on my phone to work off of here. So I'm wondering, been kind of hesitant to move this forward because I feel like there's some kinks that could probably be more fine tuned before this actually goes live. I'm concerned about any unintended consequences going forward. And rather than just passing something to then amendment, amend it again in what appears to be a rather brief turnaround, just wondering, could we just move forward with maybe just adjusting the AMI as well as the applicability of zoning districts? So it's kind of where I'm leaning at this point.
Okay, we'll move this way. Matt?
Yeah, I'll just say right off the bat, I am a fan of postponing this a little while to better understand everything that's going on. I understand, knowing that there was a meeting, it seems like maybe some additional meetings would probably be necessary to understand the red lines and everything else that are going on there, maybe incorporate some of those. I do have concerns, you know, hearing from multiple developers this evening. I, I will say, if we, from a tax perspective, we know taxes are high. We understand that housing and bringing in more folks to the area, living and working in the township, can keep taxes low. And I don't want to impede that through ambiguity or gray areas or other things where developers cannot expand. So I think for those reasons, I'd like to see what we could be doing differently. I also have questions, though, when it comes to the developers and, and others to say, well, if we were able to build the landings years ago, what's changed? Is it just a lack of space? We heard this evening that maybe the township needs to consider changing some of the zoning to allow for development, et cetera. I don't know. And again, I think the foundational theme for me is what can we be doing to build more housing to ensure that we can go ahead and keep our taxes low because that's our, that's our revenue base? So more to follow, and again, I'd be a fan of postponing this a little bit longer.
I have lots of questions. And it sounds like we have some of, can I have audible? Oh, I have lots of questions. And it sounds like there's some people in the room that can help. Right?
So I would ask us to have questions directed at staff at this point.
Okay. Great. So then, staff, ma'am. The, I've heard a lot of words. I've heard workforce, I've heard affordable. This ordinance is focused on workforce housing only, is that correct?
Correct.
And there were four changes made, roughly.
Major changes, yeah.
Four broad changes, AMI, and let's go back to it, changing for the AMI, which kind of increased over the last year. So there was a, we need to adjust for that. There was the, this is applicable to additional zoning districts, is that, okay? And then there's some, adding some additional language around options for workarounds, not workarounds, but options that, that folks could utilize to the extent they wanted to do something different. Is it, is that the core of the changes made?
Essentially. We say additional options, so we'd like designated units in other developments, that's a new feature. And then also, in the previous ordinance, it was only for sale units, now we've included for lease. So that was the other option.
So then, as I'm hearing some of the, some of our guests that have made some comments, they're saying this doesn't work. Do you understand what they're saying, what they're saying doesn't work?
I would like more information, but I, it makes me wonder, yeah, I'd like more information on why it doesn't work for them.
Okay. So in the meetings that we've had, the one meeting that a couple of our guests had, they said, we had a meeting, we thought we walked out of there with some clarity on what, did you walk out with that same clarity?
I mean, I was in the developer, developers' meeting as well, and the consensus was, yes, this needs to look, we need to look into it further. Many would like to see a more holistic regional approach to it, meaning College Township is reviewing their workforce housing ordinance, Patent Township is developing one, they don't have one yet. I believe we're all working with Center County Housing and Land Trust to kind of make those ordinance compatible. They won't all look identical, but compatible.
So Greg, if you don't mind, I'm just going to chime in here. So I do want to acknowledge that we have had two plans that have been approved. We've had a plan approved, and while it didn't go through, it has been approved for, under the workforce housing ordinance. We've also had another recently approved, the 1004 and 1006 West College Avenue. So I would just acknowledge that, I wouldn't say that this doesn't work, but I would also acknowledge that we haven't had a great deal of, of developers submit under this ordinance. I also want to acknowledge, in response, I think Christina said it very well, yes, we had a meeting, there was consensus, and it was understood that there are some other areas that the township would like to take time to collaborate with the townships to do a regional approach for a change to the amendment long-term. And by long-term, you know, we're hopeful to have that done at the end of this year. We understand that Patent Township is considering a workforce housing ordinance for the first time, and we're looking to have some continuity, understanding that those that are most beneficial, you know, mostly benefiting from workforce housing, they're not, you know, they're not exploring for housing options and giving consideration to the municipal boundary line, right? That they're just looking for workforce housing. You know, I want to, I want to bring to the board's attention that this was discussed August 1st of 2023 by the board to bring forth these amendments with the track changes proposed with all of the four areas of interest. And the board authorized staff to advertise for a public hearing to put forth these changes. And while we agree that there are opportunities to continue this collaboration and this discussion with the developers, to which me and other managers have committed to doing, staff has brought forth to the Board of Supervisors a recommendation to pass, you know, move forward this ordinance amendment that, that does identify these areas specific to the interest of the AMI. That certainly was the leading, you know, point back in August when the board had discussion in 2023 to move this forward. And so we have, you know, we have heard from the developing community, and we also understand that there are opportunities that they would like to see changes within the ordinance, right? But staff taking the initiative to bring to the board these recommended changes, that's part of what staff brought to the board in the best interest of the township and at the direction of the Board of Supervisors. And so as we respect and appreciate all of the comments that are coming from the, from the developers, I would just ask that we would want to apply our, our ordinance in terms of a text amendment application, for example. We would want to make sure that if someone in our community would like to see a change to the ordinance, that there's a process to go through that. And we have, at the direction of the board, and when I say we, I'm of course referring to staff, that we have taken feedback and we want to continue to collaborate with the development community. So I just want to make sure that there's a little bit of understanding, and I want to bring back to the board that staff has really been operating at the direction of the board.
Thanks for writing that context. Yeah, and just to your point, before we continue with some comments, because of the, the narrow nature of the current ordinance, only applicable to two zoning districts, there is not that much development in those two zoning districts. I think that would also speak to why there hasn't been seen building there for these workforce housing units. So, did you have another comment?
I have lots of questions.
Okay.
Because I mean, I think hearing a lot of this, a lot of the comments has kind of elicited a little bit more kind of, hmm, why, and you know, kind of a little bit more why. So I'm going to keep going. I, I hear you, madam manager, and in the business world, because at least what I heard was, hey, we started this process back in August. The board said, look at these four things. Staff said, hey, we see four things. The board said, look at four things. Staff did what they were asked to do by the board. And there's a process. And so we're through that process, and we're now at the fight, the ending step of that And, okay, in theory, we either need to do these four things that were identified in August or not. And then we need to start a new process for the 15 things that everyone else has kind of brought up and brought before them. So I think I'm back to my question, though, of who understands why this doesn't work? At least for those that have said this doesn't work. Does anybody kind of have that, kind of that golden nugget that tells me, yep, developer says, when I go to my pro forma and I build these 15 units, and I go to, and I have to build 1.5, which you rounded up to two, that's what some of this draft language is saying, okay, and then I go to, I go to sell these two units at this percentage, well, how do I do that? I, I'm, I, I think the answer is, well, there's some regs that go with the ordinance that maybe aren't written yet? Question?
Policy for when these rental units are constructed. So there's, there's further work between the Center County Housing Land Trust and the township.
Okay. So some of the questions that Mr. Dockett brought up in red in the document really aren't part of the ordinance. They're something else that's yet to be written.
I mean, that he brought up.
It'll be part of an MOU that we have with the Center County Housing Land Trust.
Right.
That'll be executed when those developments are built.
Thank you. And some of the items that I did here, you know, I think certainly warrant opportunities to discuss more of a holistic approach. Other items I heard about the ulterior or structural alteration, you know, the township does have a definition within an ordinance in Chapter 27. So, so I, you know, I, I completely understand that there are questions, and I don't know that we're all, like, I know that I've understood what I've heard, and I do respect and appreciate that there is an opportunity to take a holistic approach here with this ordinance. And, and not just for the developer, but ultimately for those that are looking for workforce housing. You come into Ferguson Township and you see that there, there aren't a lot of options. And as we do see developers wanting to build out, I think absolutely we want to figure out how we can construct workforce housing in the development community. And so I, I'm in support and would like to have those conversations. I think bringing it back for the board to make a decision this evening on this ordinance amendment that's been provided, I think the board, and I, and I recognize that this may be a, you know, an ongoing discussion, but ultimately the amendments, as it's related to what's in front of the board this evening, staff would like to see if, if there's action that would like to be taken, or ultimately your, your decision to delay would be understood.
Thank you. And yes, and that's what I would encourage us to keep this discussion tonight, too, to these amendments, to our current ordinance that is on the books. So we have an ordinance. I wouldn't say that there is, you know, I wouldn't expect there to be an immediate change to whatever is passed this evening. That's, they're ongoing discussions about workforce housing in the township, the region, and the county. And so those conversations will continue. And so just, but just to keep us focused on this amendment this evening, I just encourage us to keep the questions about, about these amendments specifically.
Chair, I, I do apologize. I promised to talk less in the rest of the meeting, but I, it's, you know, as I hear some of these concerns that have been brought up, I just want to make sure that as we, and I guess you mentioned it quite well, that, you know, when we say there's four things, and then, you know, there's some other things brought up, that's called scope creep in the business world and, and in the construction world, right? And, and so that's what we're talking about here when, when we say, well, we can do it. I think we can do more. we can do it. I think we can do more, like, hey, we can do these other eight things, but that wasn't what the board directed staff to do. And so I'm just trying to get to in my mind, and hopefully in, in talking through this, that we as a board are okay with the four things in, in the original direction that we gave to our, our staff. And knowing that there's, and, and my next question is, when is the, when is, when are we starting on the other 15 things that need to change to make this holistic?
And I, I guess I would caution us that there is not, you know, an expectation that there is going to be another immediate change on this. So like I said, you know, we would have to look back to the work plan that we've assigned to the Planning Commission and what they would look at. I'd look to COG and that Lucy Committee that deals with regional affordable housing issues and the county. We referenced the county housing study that was done. So I appreciate and understand and agree with what you're saying. So I think this is something the board could ask to bring back for future discussion, but as far as tonight's, I, I would separate those issues out.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. I want to get Patty in here on the discussion.
So to be, to be clear, just to the four issues that were listed, I'm okay with, with being presented there. I'm supportive.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll make a couple of brief comments, as I am as well. I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with these. As was stated before, this is something that the board had asked staff to look at. And we will conclude board discussion and comment before we have any other public comments. So just so that you're aware, we will, you know, obviously be able to consider additional amendments, but we do have a current ordinance. So I don't want that to be lost.
I'm sorry, not to be rude.
I'm sorry. We're not going to allow interruption. And as I said, we'll finish board discussion, and then I'll have a chance to take additional public comment after that. So we will allow, you know, or we can obviously bring back to a future agenda different changes that we want to see in this. But for these four changes that were discussed, I'd be comfortable moving forward. And one, one part of that was, we do have a regional understanding. This went to the county, this went to the Center Region Planning Commission. And so all these other bodies did look at this as part of that process. And so that had gone through this. So I wouldn't say this was rushed or urgent in some way, but it had gone through the process of all of those levels of oversight and, and agreement. And so that's why we are fulfilling kind of the process of what we had asked staff to start with. So, you know, I would just, I would leave my comments there to say, I'm comfortable with those four things at this point, but absolutely acknowledge the need to continue looking at this. All the comments we heard really speak to the complexity of the issue and all the different facets involved in not only creating but sustaining a level of affordable housing in our township, but region-wide and county-wide, I think we always have to acknowledge as well. So I think, you know, some of the comments listed were even speaking to other building costs, you know, sewer tapping fees, you know, these are all things kind of outside of our purview right here this evening, but all absolutely things that are being acknowledged by other bodies as well, as costs that are, that are adding to, to housing costs. So I'm going to look to the board and see if there are any other comments. I'll go back to Jeremy first, because you were first to speak, and there's been a lot of comment.
I, I, I kind of feel like I'm getting more questions as we go along. And, you know, I totally apologize for that, and I really don't have anything further added this time.
That's fair. We'll just go back around once more. I'll.
It was still the same questions, and I think more questions also, but nothing to add.
Thanks. Amari, anything additional?
Nothing additional.
Patty, anything else?
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Oh, we've gone quite a bit beyond our allotted time for this discussion, but I would allow, you know, a couple more minutes for some public comment if there was additional public comment. But please just keep it to a few minutes. We've, we're on the first item of a very long agenda this evening. And so I would just ask you to speak just to the matter before us this evening, these particular amendments, and please give your name and township of residence for the minute's sake. Please, thank you.
I live in Ferguson, and I have SNA Homes. Just want to make sure you don't, we don't get lost in the translation. I think a few of the board members have asked good questions. Those four items do matter. So you said you're only dealing with the ordinance tonight. Now, you're, you're actually changing, you have a current ordinance that deals with two zones, TTD and your streetscape. Number one, what that's saying is it all land, all land in the regional growth boundary will now be changed tonight if you address this to include the workforce housing. It doesn't work for us. So I think the questions that, that some of the board members are asking are good questions, because that's my whole, that's my whole point. Number one, doesn't work for us, because you're now taking a piece of R1 land, and you're saying, now you have that workforce housing on it. It doesn't, it doesn't work. So, so we have to make sure when you're saying, if you're only changing your current ordinance to address the two current districts, that's different. But that's not what you're doing. And that's why I make sure everybody understands this, because I'm not, I'm not sure that's, that's clear. That's very important, because that's why it can't do it, because you're, because you're looking at approving these four, especially number one.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yep, absolutely. Our current ordinance regards the two zoning districts. This would make it applicable to the rest of the, yes, the other, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And again, I would ask you to please keep your comments very specific to this. If there's just anything additional to add, just for a couple of minutes, and please give us your name and township of residence.
Our provision in College Township. My apologies. In addition to what Bob said is an accurate point, the modifications is very impactful. It's not just four minor modifications of an existing ordinance. What, what I do want to bring up is the two developments here that have built affordable housing are student housing projects, and they're high density, and they're located. And I'll tell you, one of the problems that they had in that district was the streetscape setbacks, which that should be also something.
That is not part of this this evening.
But the affordability issue is what you're dealing with, which is lowering the threshold from 80% to 120% to 60%. That amendment can be made, you know, surgically just for that matter. And the only reason why those developments did build affordable housing, again, is because they were student housing, multifamily, multi-story. But if you change the zoning in all these different areas, you don't have, you have single-family houses that are half-acre, one-acre lots. It just is not applicable.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I will take one more public comment, please, just only new information, and just a couple minutes, please give us your name and township of residence.
I'm John Stetson from Panter Engineering here in Ferguson Township. And we're the engineers that have to deal with these ordinances. And if there are that many questions in the ordinances, it would seem to behoove the township and the development community to postpone the action on this and at least address the questions, so that when I have this ordinance to work with, at least we understand where everybody's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And again, I appreciate all the comments. And just to reiterate, there is an ordinance existing already. And so I, I don't want that mischaracterized at all, so that everyone's clear on that. We do have a motion and a second. You know, I won't presume where folks stand, but you know, if someone wanted to table that motion, you would be able to do that at this point. Or we could call, it's a roll call vote. So I'll look to the manager to see what timing would look like, I suppose, if we tabled a motion, and any additional feedback.
I don't have a response for you, Madam Chair. In terms of the timeline, I would, you know, we, we've tabled it a few times. And this evening, the board would just need to decide if, you know, I would really ask the board to make a decision if you want to, I would say maybe not just table it, but, but to make a decision if you're going to take action on these items. I think, you know, staff has certainly, you know, responded to the discussion held in August of 2023, and then brought back the amendments. And I recognize and understand, and I would go as far as to say that I, I appreciate and would like to respond through this collaborative regional approach that we're trying to take with the developing community. And I also acknowledge, too, that the comments that, you know, to be forthcoming with the board, to share all of the comments, I think it was already stated, staff spent over two hours, you know, really sifting through these items. And one of the, the takeaways were that the items of concern expressed by the development community, as staff has heard it, are not within what's being brought to the board for the amendments. And so amendments that need to be made at the request of a resident and/or an agency, we would ask as a township that you would submit a text amendment application and bring to the board, as we are currently, you know, in the process of doing for other requests to the township to amend the ordinance. And so, and I would say we've even gone one step further because of the dialogue that the board has heard at the September meeting. And then, you know, in, in other meetings, staff has taken action. And I, you know, I personally have even reached out to the other managers to better understand what they're doing and what, how our ordinance differs from what College Township's looks like. I've been in conversations with the new manager at Patent Township, and good news, Patent Township is considering an ordinance. And so we are trying to take action and effort to respond to what we're hearing, as well at, you know, not just from the development community, but also from those, those that are trying to provide adequate housing for those seeking workforce housing. Understanding that it is our, you know, teachers that work in the school district, and it's our officers, it's our, you know, individuals that work here for our township who have expressed interest in wanting to live in this inner region, but the, the cost is, is just a bit too high. And so when we hear those types of things, we certainly want to respond. But even as staff, there's really not a whole lot that we can do, except for respond at the direction of, of the board, which we've done with what's provided to you this evening. And so respectfully, I would, I would ask the board that you give consideration to taking action, whether that is to approve or, or not. I think that, that staff has put a great deal of time and work into this, into this, and we will continue to do that, whether it's phase two or, or not. We'll continue to move this forward, so.
I appreciate that very much. And based on that feedback, and, you know, knowing we've already been through this process before, I'm not sure how much more progress could be made on just tabling this. So we'll go ahead and call for a vote at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-03. Mr. Thompson?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
No.
Mr. Patterson? Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the roll call fails through two.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the discussion from the board, all the input. These are all great comments and questions, and we'll continue to, to explore different ways to make what we have on the books work and how to coordinate with the rest of the region, and as I said, the county, on trying to make this move forward. And I really appreciate the comments from the public for you taking the time to come in and share your concerns, both in person and in writing and online. And I encourage the feedback to continue. I think it's an important part of the discussion. So thanks to everyone. And in case there are a few folks leaving the room, we will.
Did you say anything that we send back to staff? Was the motion?
No. Okay. So we will move on to a continued discussion for approval of the 2024 Authorities, Boards, and Commission work plans. And we'll go to Mr. Progar.
At the December 2023 regular meeting, the board was asked to review Authorities, Boards, and Commissions work plans for 2024. Following review and comment by the board, staff adjusted the work plans for further review at the December 12, 2023 regular meeting. The board provided common and extended review of the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee work plan. There also included in the packet with the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee work plan is the Planning Commission work plan. There was one item, I believe it was the ag security area that the board requested more information on before the final approval. And the community planner and township manager can speak to that more directly. The board has now asked to review the work plans and approve for 2024.
Thanks very much. Would someone care to make the motion?
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the 2024 Authorities, Boards, and Commission work plans.
Is there a second?
This is Amari. Second.
Okay, discussion. Any comments? Nope. Nothing. All right. Seeing nothing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the LaCrone West Final Land Development Plan and back to Christina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The LaCrone West Final Land Development Plan is located at 3490 West College Avenue. This parcel is 4.837 acres and is owned general commercial in the corridor overlaid. The land development plan proposes a self-storage facility with six buildings totaling 46,036 square feet. There's a total of 531 storage units proposed that will be available. There are 12 parking spaces, which include two ADA spaces and two long-term interior bike lockers, and two short-term exterior bicycle parking will be provided. Sidewalks are supposed to be constructed along State Route 26, making the connection to the existing sidewalks at 3510 West College Avenue. The LaCrone West Preliminary Land Development Plan was approved by the board on October 17. And the remaining comments are pretty administrative in nature. They are listed here. And the Planning Commission reviewed this at their January 8 meeting, and conditionally recommended the board conditionally approve the plan.
All right. Thank you. Would someone like to make the motion?
This is Amari. So moved.
Would you care to read it?
I know. Same thing. I gotta read. This is Amari. I move that the board approve the LaCrone West Final Land Development Plan dated December 3, 2023, subject to the conditions set forth in the Community Planner's memorandum dated January 3, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Matt. I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to new business. And we have four items on the consent agenda. Did anyone need to remove any of those items for discussion? And seeing nothing, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Patty. So moved, moving forward the consent agenda that's listed in tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Matt. I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. Okay, next up is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, adopting a five-year asset smoothing on the police pension fund. And we'll go to Todd Grady, Finance Director.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's been recommended by Conrad Segal, our actuarial consultants, to adopt a five-year smoothing method to determine the actuarial values of assets of the Ferguson Township Police Pension Plan instead of using the fair or market value of planned assets. It is a technique, technique used to recognize gains or losses in pension assets over a five-year period to reduce the effects of market fatality and stabilize contributions. It is effective January 1 of 2023. The agenda is mistyped. The resolution is correct. It will impact contributions started in 2025.
All right. Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing for comments on this item. And seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for. And seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Matt, I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors move to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Amari, second.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for 2024-03. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to a discussion on the Center Area Transportation Authority, or CADA, services in Ferguson Township. You go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will actually go ahead and yield the floor to the CADA Executive Director interim, Mr. David Rischold.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to come and chat with you tonight. I don't think I've ever had a warm-up before from a public hearing, so hopefully no action is required for this, so we can go forward. Wanted to talk with you a little bit about some of the changes that we've just made with our services and a little bit about what's coming or what we're working on into the future. Please, you can go ahead. Just as an overall kind of financial picture of where CADA is at the moment, our budget for this past year was just under $26 million. And probably it's difficult to see from where you're sitting, but to break that down, about 15 million or about 60, 62% of our budget is state and federal subsidies that we receive. We also receive, in yellow there, the other revenues, which is essentially advertising and other things that we're able to generate from our buses. We also get contract revenues. This is a combination of contracts we have with apartment complexes for passes, where we add extra service for those passengers, and also with Penn State University, which is our biggest contractor. As you probably know, we operate the loops and the link routes on campus under contract to Penn State. We also get almost $2 million from fare box revenue, fares paid by passengers. I'll skip over the red for a second. And then we get 774,000 from you folks, not all from you, but from the five municipalities that are members of CADA as local match, and that enables us to get all the money in the blue. Sadly, we do have a deficit. This has really been a result of services that have declined since COVID. We're still more than a million rides a year under pre-COVID levels. We were 2 million, so we've cut that gap a little bit, but we're still trying to climb back up from there. And, next slide, please. That really leads me to what I wanted to talk about mostly today, which is some adjustments we've made to our service. To give you some background, since COVID, not only was our ridership down, but we lost quite a few drivers. And we have not been able to replace those drivers. We've been consistently down from 12% to 15% with our driving force. And we've tried many creative recruiting efforts, and we simply haven't been able to get over that hurdle. So we took a good look at service because we really reached a point where we were using a lot of non-operation staff to drive routes, even in some cases dispatchers and mechanics who had CDLs and were trained to be able to drive a route. And this is something that simply was not sustainable for CADA. And we looked at our services because some of the ridership is down, and we tried to determine, are there some ways that we can surgically adjust our services, look at some areas where the ridership has dropped off, and we can provide some alternatives in those areas to save some of the driver hours necessary to operate our service so that we can be sure that we can reliably operate the service that we do have on the schedules? So, yeah, sorry. So what we did is we took a look at our ridership, and we were able to look at ridership by stops and see where people are getting on, where they're getting off the buses. And we came up with a package of adjustments that would save 388 driver hours, yet would only impact 140 passengers who were using our service systemwide. And for those 140 passengers, the change that they would experience is rather than being able to get on a fixed route that went by their house, they would access CADA through our GO microtransit service. So no one was going to be left without service. It's just a small number of people would have to use GO to access the system. Our preference was to not have to make any of these changes, but we really had no choice. We implemented this new service last Monday, and in general, the implementation has gone incredibly smoothly. One of the slight complications is that in December, we implemented a new software system for our CADA GO service. If you're not familiar with the CADA GO, it's kind of an Uber-like service where you have a handheld app or you can call a reservation number. You request a ride, and a vehicle will come and pick you up, and often you'll get to share that ride with somebody else. The app that we were using didn't guarantee your pickup time, you couldn't lock that in. It also couldn't lock in a delivery time. And one of our goals going forward is to try to synchronize these services as much as possible so that if you're living in an area served by CADA GO and you want to connect to the fixed route, the software will actually help you make that connection. Our previous software did not have that function. This software has that capability, but we're still working on implementing it. When we put this new service in place, one of the things we were concerned about is an area that we have shifted from fixed route service to CADA GO service is kind of the Cato Park area out here. We have a very small number of people who come out here, but we knew we had some people who did commute to and from here. So our fixed route service now ends at Butt Street. And last week, we stationed a CADA GO vehicle at that area just in case passengers weren't aware of the change, to be sure nobody was stranded. And we actually did pick up four or five people every day who were making that connection, coming out here to work. Feedback we got from those passengers is that they liked the service, they were happy with it. So it's a work in progress. So some specific ridership updates for Ferguson Township for CADA Ride. And CADA Ride is our paratransit service. This is a service for folks who have disabilities and senior citizens. We have 71 registered patrons who use the service in Ferguson Township. Seven of them use it because of disability-related issues under the ADA. 64 of them use it as lottery-funded, so they're seniors. And we did 3,500 trips last year. 41% were medical-related, and the rest were employment, shopping, education, and other purposes. Next slide, please. Our CADA GO service, one of the changes that we made in August is we used to have two CADA GO regions out here that were not connected. We connected everything together, so we now call it the Center West Region. It's the blue area in the map that you can see. Here's a list of the places, I'm not going to read them. But you can travel both within this service and you can connect to the fixed route system at several points within here. And ridership in this area has been growing throughout the year. Next slide. So an overview again of our CADA GO service. The fare for CADA GO is the same as for fixed route, it's $2.20 per ride. It runs 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday in this area. A new thing about the application that we're using, the handheld application, as I said, is you can either book for a pickup time or you can book for desired delivery time. We're still working on some kinks for the software, but it is working on the whole much better than the old software that we've turned off. The idea of this service is to optimize shared rides. It's a somewhat expensive service for us to operate, and the more people we can take at one time with a vehicle, the more cost-effective the service is. It makes a great deal of sense in areas with lower density where we're unlikely to ever get a full bus. So as we kind of get out of the core of the region, we want to be sure that passengers have access to public transit service. This is a far more cost-effective way of doing it in terms of cost efficiency than continuing to run buses there where nobody's riding on. A few other things we've done to help people make this adjustment or to use these services, we actually produced a video, a how-to video, that's just gone live on our website last week, that goes through the process of how to book a ride, how to use the service, and we've already gotten some good feedback about that. And of course, all of our CADA GO vehicles or the CADA GO service in a whole is fully accessible and ADA compliant, and we have bike racks in all the vehicles as well. This is just kind of a plug for our new app, easy to download, available on the App Store and on the Google Play Store and through our websites. I wanted to give you also an update on some conversations we're having with our contracted So to give you a quick overview of the difference, the five member municipalities that CADA is legally created to serve are the Borough of State College and the township surrounding the center region. In order for us to provide service in any other area, we have to have a contract with the municipality of that area, and that contract has to specify what the services they want us to provide, and they also have to assure us that the service will be financially self-sustaining. And currently, we provide service in three municipalities that are beyond the center region, Spring Township, Benner Township, and the Borough of Belfont. So the cost apportionment, you can see the difference here on the, on your left side, is the cost apportionment for the center region. Because we operate a number of different services here that create some subsidies, we're able to apply some of those subsidy, or I wouldn't call them profits, but additional revenues to offset some of the costs. That's not available to municipalities that are contracting with us for service. So in that case, any services provided to a contracted municipality, we apply 62% of the costs are covered by the state and federal subsidies. Then we would apply the fares charged to the service, and if there are any remaining costs that are not covered, the municipality is responsible for those. So we are having conversations with the three contracted municipalities now regarding how they want to move forward. The, go to the next slide. Spring Township, for some time, has been unhappy with the contract they have with CADA service, and they notified us in the spring of last year that they intended to leave the system as of June 30 and 24. And we've been talking with them to see if we could figure out a way to keep them in the system, but as far as we know, they still intend to leave. Obviously, this is going to impact services in Benner and Belfont, and we're talking with those municipalities as well about how willing they are to continue to fund these services. We're going to have to conclude these negotiations with these municipalities by the end of January or early February and decide how to move forward with these services. So I can't tell you at this point whether they'll be remain in the service area or whether they will not. Next slide. A few other things to update you related to the conversation we had earlier about development. One of the things that CADA relies on fairly significantly is a pass program that we have with apartment complexes where primarily students traveling to the university or people traveling into town, living in apartment complexes, they get a pass with that apartment complex, and they can use our services for free. That is an incredibly important revenue source for CADA. And we also feel and hope you will agree that it's a benefit for the community, not just because it funds public trans, but also because literally thousands of people who would otherwise be driving or not driving, and they're riding transit instead. So it enables our road system to be much less congested. For this program, we've informed the apartments that we're going to do a 10% increase in the costs for that this year, which is going to enhance our operating revenue. And we are doing a pilot with our apartment passes with an apartment, the Brin on Viro Boulevard. Currently, these passes are only good for the specific services that we've set up to get people from their apartment to the university. We're doing an experiment to see if we broaden the usability of that pass, if it would be perceived as a higher value to residents. And if it is, then we may consider expanding that in the future and also possibly using that as another source of revenue if we can charge more because it's a full system pass. And we would certainly ask, and I believe it's been done in this township before, what's increasingly happening in townships is as these new developments come in for approval, one of the questions that's often asked is, are people going to be using public transit? And I believe the Yards, part of their approval process required that they had to provide passes. Aspen, thank you. There have been a couple, and that, I think, makes sense both for supportive transit and, again, traffic management throughout the region. Next. Our other big contracted services with the university, we negotiate our contract with Penn State once every three years and revisit the funding for, or the funding amount annually. Over the years, we used to recover about 70% of the cost of providing a university service, and that has dropped into the 60% range, 50% range, so we're working on getting that back up, trying to be sure that the costs for that service are being recovered to the extent possible. And just a few other priorities for the coming year. We're trying to do a lot more of this, coming to talk with you and get your input, other than just whenever we'd like you to give us match in the spring. So we're very interested in hearing your thoughts and suggestions about service improvements you'd like to see within the township. We are continually looking at our network of services and optimizing that. As we're able to bring drivers back in and improve our driver numbers, some of the changes that we've just recently made, we'll be revisiting to see if we need to sustain them or if we can continue to make changes, you know, as our driving force hopefully increases. We're also going to be replacing our system-wide fare collection. We'd like to move to a system where people can use credit cards or any other fare media smartphones, make that fully compatible with the university systems so that we can have one fare system that people can use, they don't have to buy tokens, they don't have to buy any kind of special fare media. And mobility as a service is a concept where we have one app that tells you where everything in the region is and how to connect to everything in the region, both the services we provide, services Penn State provides that the public can use, so members of the public can look at one place for all their mobility needs. And we're also looking at some long-term issues such as exploring where we might have transit hubs in the future as the system grows and dovetailing that with development plans within the municipalities. And that's it. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. And we'll start over here this time. Matt, questions, comments?
No, I think, you know, that was very informative, and I appreciate that. When I hear, though, that 140 daily riders are now not in the system or able to use a standard route, I do get concerned, knowing the size of the buses. I'm just curious, what does an average bus, not a, you know, a stretched, we'll say, whatever they're called, what's an average bus hold?
It depends on how it's configured. Some of them we have configured for more standees, but it's around 40 to 60 people, depending on how it's configured and depending on whether there were standees in addition to seated passengers.
Okay. So we're talking essentially just over two buses a day of people that can't get around or use the system as it was?
Honestly, I'm not sure I'd characterize it that way, but I suppose you could use that as a way of illustrating it. But we do know already that many of those passengers have shifted over and are using CADA, CADA GO.
Generally speaking, 140, how many is that compared to the ridership that is not Penn State? State-related? In other words, on campus, using the Blue Loop, White Loop, et cetera. That 140, how's it fit into the grand scheme of the percentage of the total of users that are not Penn State or on Penn State's campus? Do we have an idea of that?
I would have to get that for you, but it's a very low percentage. I mean, we have thousands of daily riders. Yeah, so it's a very small percentage.
All right. I think I'll reserve some of my comments until others have voiced theirs related to some of the public input that I've had already.
Thank you. Okay, Omari, questions?
Hello, Omari. How's it going? As we begin to close the gap, increasing the number of riders, will the service come back to some of those areas where, you know, as we, riders decreased, service went away? And so as we get more riders, is it, will it come back? Is that kind of in the plans?
If, if we see the demonstrated demand and we have the resource to do that, then yes.
Okay. Leading question here, so as, so for instance, Catta Go, that's been a kind of Belfont, west into Ferguson, a couple of areas where we've been using that more. You mentioned demonstrate demand, so as, if Catta Go is starting to see that there's tens, hundreds, thousands of those trips, does it then go, make sense to kind of go back to fixed route?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. What we strive for is the most cost-effective way of providing public transportation. And to your point, I was going to ask, you put the PowerPoint back up, but to talk in round numbers about costs, when we run a fixed route bus, costs us about $130, $140 an hour. That's no matter whether anybody rides it or not. When we ride, when we operate a Catta Go vehicle, costs us $60 and change an hour. So an example of kind of where we're watching this carefully is in Harris Township, where we used to operate a couple of fixed routes that very few people rode. So we spent a great deal of money providing bus service out there that nobody rode. We've transitioned that to Catta Go service, and as long as we're able to operate two Catta Go vehicles, that's still cheaper than what it would have cost to operate fixed route in the area. And we're providing substantially more service in that area now than we ever did on fixed route at a lower cost. And the Catta Go service provides both services within the area, and it also links to the broader network, depending on where people want to go. I think in Harris and in the Belfont area, because the model is the same over there, the Spring, Benner, Belfont area, it's service within the area and also service to the Nittany Mall where you can connect to the network. About 30% of passengers seem to connect to the network, and the rest just do transportation within that area. Catta, or Center West is going to be different, because I think a lot of people there have been using it to connect to the fixed route to come into downtown or to the university. So it depends on the service area. But the threshold is if we have more than, a need for more than two vehicles, then we start to look at, should we be doing fixed route here instead?
Okay.
But the people who've become accustomed to Catta Ride, that is another concern. It's really nice because it comes to your door, close to your door, and drops you off close to your door. And once people learn how to use the system, they tend to like it far better than they do fixed route. So we have to be thoughtful of how we convince people to go back to the bus if they've become too used to Catta Go.
Okay. And then have you received kind of community feedback? I think you said largely people are happy with Catta Go, but those that are not happy with it, are there improvements that you guys are working on?
It's mainly related to the functionality of the new app. We've had some difficulty making the connections. There is, there's a functionality we do not yet have that we will in the spring, sorry to get technical, but there's this thing called GTFS, which is a new federal requirement. It is a continuous publicly accessible data feed of what our buses are doing all the time. Federal government uses it to keep an eye on what we're doing and our efficiency and all that kind of stuff. The advantage of that is, is that that can be used by software providers. If you use Google to figure out where our Catta buses, that's where that information's coming from. So we're constantly streaming that. Our new app for Catta Go will be able to tie into that. So if you say you want to go from Pine Grove Mills to Nittany Mall, and so you need to connect to the college connector, the software will help you figure out how to do that. It will do it for you, so you won't have to do that yourself. That's our goal, to make the connection between the two modes much more seamless. We could never have done it with our old app, it just didn't have that functionality.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thanks. And Patty, and we'll go ahead and conclude, board comment and before we take any public comment. Patty?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So I haven't had the opportunity yet to ride Catta Go. It's one of those things that I have to figure out. I should let you know that I am a public transit rider, I don't drive, and I confess to being disappointed that the service out this way was cut. I will offer one reason maybe why your ridership isn't back is since COVID, it seems that every semester, you know, whether it's the fall schedule or the winter schedule or et cetera, the service is changing and routes are cut. And I appreciate that you have driver shortages and funding issues and trying to do more with less. I completely understand that, and I always appreciate that. I just would like to advocate on behalf of people who are not students and not going anywhere to say, a consistency for maybe even a year might get more people riding buses. It's really hard to do that when it changes every, every winter or fall break. My other comment is about the College Avenue Connector. As, you know, mostly public transit riders are pretty flexible about walking a few blocks to connect to a fixed route. So the fact that College Avenue Connector now ends at Butt Street is sort of, leaves me scratching my head as to why there, because the red link is really just a few blocks away on campus. And so the people who would be going to Butt Street to that apartment building there probably have more frequent service riding the red link over there and just cutting through to their apartment building. So I would offer this suggestion on the College Avenue Connector that maybe bring it out to Bristol and then run it down Bristol, and you could then go to the Yards and get more apartment buildings in there. Just my two cents, and it would work for me.
I appreciate the feedback.
Because your Catta Go at night, like for instance, if I was coming to this meeting, I'd be forced to go to Uber anyway because it would stop at 8:00. So that's just my suggestion.
Okay. I appreciate it.
And that way I could walk a couple of blocks up to the Township Building. That's not unreasonable. And my other question is, is question slash comment, is that over in the Yards, actually, we have a problem with trash. And I, the last time I was through on the bus, going through the Yards, the trash cans at your bus shelters were overflowing. I want to say there were three of them, and each and every one of them was overflowing with trash. So who collects the trash at your Catta shelters? Is that you?
No. We're actually furious about that as well. That's the responsibility of the Yards. And we've been trying to talk with management there about emptying the trash. So that is, we are as unhappy as you are about that situation.
Okay. Okay. So, so anyway, that's, that's my comment. I would love for, I do have to learn how to use Catta Go, that is on my list of things to do. And my other comment is, I would love to see the College Avenue Connector extended out to Bristol at least.
And to, to that point, we are constantly looking, we have a service planning team, and we're constantly looking at ways to see if we can restore some fixed route service to this area whenever we have the resources to do so.
And one more comment, too. I would be remiss if I didn't tell, I'm not sure, I haven't been on the College Avenue Connector in a while. Where is the bus stop there for the new apartment building near Buckout? Is it, where, the outbound bus stop from campus out?
Yeah, I'm trying to think where that is. It's a block before Buckout, I believe.
Okay, so there's not one across from the new apartment building? Because I think that there was some concern from residents in that area that there was a Catta stop, like where the old house property was, and then that the students might just dash across College Avenue there.
What's that? Yeah, that stop is closed, but we, let me get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm going to allow public comment now, so you could stay at the podium, or I'd invite you to be seated if you wish, it's completely up to you. I know you may not be prepared for answering questions that come up, so feel free to either respond or, you know, you can get back to us.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think I have with me Lori Miller, she's our Director of Planning and Community Outreach. We're going to capture all the questions here today, partly because we want to make sure that they are into our customer feedback system, because we track that, and then we'll be able to get back in touch with people at a later date when we can look into these things. So, thank you.
Thanks. And I was remiss, Jeremy does have a couple of questions, I think.
Yes. So to tie into what Mr. Heller and Ms. Stevens had pointed out, I did actually, I was actually talking to somebody that works in Ferguson Township, that said, one of their coworkers who lives outside the region, they used to use Catta Go, which would connect them to a fixed route, that took them relatively close to their employer, but with the recent changes, they now have to take Catta Go, get on a fixed route, and then transfer to another route to get to their employer, but they're only allowed one transfer, so now they have to pay twice the fare to get to work.
That shouldn't be. If you want to talk to me after the meeting, we'll find out who that is.
And I had told that person, probably have a coworker call into Catta to at least voice their concern. And I do like the idea of the pilot program of the fix, of the bus pass going to the whole route. I know a lot of those passes are in student housing. I actually lived in student housing for a good long time, even after college, and I at one time had an employer in Patton Township, but my pass was only good to campus where I graduated. So, nice to see that. And as you talk about new technology, I will point out, as Patty said, she's the public transit rider. I'm the person that takes trains, and from one thing that I have learned when I was over in the Bethlehem, Allentown area, I really liked the setup that Lanta had with a mobile app where I was able to actually buy just a one-way pass for one trip. That made it very easy, unlike when I was in King County that serves the Seattle area where you had to find change, and I didn't quite plan that when I made that big of a trip, to carry change with me to make the bus routes.
Well, actually, you can do that now with, we have a system called Token Transit, which allows
Oh, okay.
...people to do virtual purchases. It's an add-on, and it can be cumbersome, and we want to replace our 20, 30-year-old fare boxes with a new system where we don't have to add things on. It's a system that you'll be able to use any kind of fare media for.
And that's good to know, because at one time I thought Token Transit was only like $6 for a whole pass, the whole day, and it's like, I don't necessarily want to spend $6 if I just need to go one place and be done for the day. So, nice to know.
Okay. Sit down.
Excuse me. Could I add some comments to the earlier speaker, Patrick? Patricia, for the, for the, for the Catta bus?
Yeah, we're gonna, we have a, kind of a virtual line here of folks who've had their hand up, so go ahead and raise your digital hand, and we will get to you for your comments in order here.
Okay.
Thank you. And I think up first, I'm looking, Roseanne, if you would like to give your name and township of residence?
Hi, thank you for hearing me. Yes, I'm Roseanne McManus, and I live in Ferguson Township. Specifically, I live in Fox Point neighborhood, so right around the intersection of College Avenue and Bristol. And I've been taking the Catta bus usually five days a week to work since I moved here in 2019. And as other people have already done, I wanted to express my disappointment at the elimination of the College Avenue Connector service. I have been using the Catta Go, but it's really not a good replacement for commuters, and no one that I've talked to thinks that it is. In fact, a lot of people haven't even been willing to try it and have started driving. So, I mean, as was already explained, it does not go to campus, so you can't use it to get directly to campus. What Catta recommends is connecting to the College Avenue Connector at Butt Street, but, you know, everyone who's traveled by air knows that connections make things a lot more difficult. And of course, this is connecting from a service that runs on a fixed timetable, the bus, to Catta Go, which does not. As I said, I've experimented with Catta Go. One time I used the arrive-by option to try to mash up with a bus. It got me there 15 minutes early, which is pretty early on a cold day. Also, I waited for the Catta Go van for 15 minutes on that day. So that made my total commute about 40 minutes, and that's for about three and a half miles. It used to be 10 minutes. Other cases, I've used the option of requesting a pickup time with the idea of just walking the rest of the way to campus, which is about a mile, but rather than trying to connect to the bus. If you do the pickup request time, most of the time, like a slight majority, it comes at the requested time, but it can come 10, 20, even 30 minutes later, it's a 30-minute pickup window. Also, the duration of the ride can vary a lot, depending on whether it picks up and drops off other people. So really, if I request, say, a 7:00 AM pickup time, I don't know if I'm going to get to my destination at 7:10, 7:20, 7:30, 7:40, even 7:50. That's just not reliable enough for commuters. Now, maybe better technology will improve this a little bit, but traffic is inherently unpredictable. Even Google's not very good at predicting exactly when you're going to arrive somewhere. I also feel personally it's worse for the environment. When I rode the bus, there were other people on there. Usually when I ride Catta Go, it's just me, so about maybe half to one-third of the time, one other person. I mean, I feel like I'm creating extra pollution by specifically requesting this Catta Go ride, whereas the bus will be running anyway. Also, the transition hasn't been very well managed because it's actually not possible to select Butt Street yet as your stop in Catta Go, and so people have been selecting all other stops around there, and it's led to a lot of confusion with the drivers driving around, looking, trying to find people. Now, that probably get better eventually, but that's just an example of how this hasn't been planned very well. I'm sorry to complain so much, but I just feel Catta really hasn't acknowledged all the problems with Catta Go. They're promoting it as like a better alternative, but it's really not predictable enough for commuters, and that's why there's so many other people here with their hands up. And it's going to be hard for you to assess whether demand is coming back, because so many people have just abandoned the bus to drive. So I think you're really kind of killing demand for public transportation. And I think there's a variety of possible solutions. Patty had a possible solution, you could run service less frequently, you could run service just during rush hour, or you could even make the RC route come a little closer to our neighborhood. So thank you for listening, and I do appreciate, I mean, I do appreciate the difficulties that Catta is facing, and I've been a big fan of Catta for a long time, I've always been a big promoter of the bus. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. And next was Erin, if you would like to give your name and township of residence?
Yes, my name's Erin King. I am a resident of Ferguson Township. I live on Bristol Avenue, not far from Autumnwood Park, roughly a quarter of a mile from where I used to catch the CC bus near the corner of the CC bus, near the corner of, near the corner of Bristol and West College. That not being an option any longer has been difficult since January 8th, mainly because I'm pretty much in the same boat as Roseanne. And I really appreciate your comments, Roseanne, because a lot of us, I think, are in the same boat. Where, I mean, the times that I've taken CADA go, there's been, it's either been myself or one other person. One time there was a student who had to, who was on CADA go, who had to book the service an hour in advance, just because he didn't know what time he would be able to get to the fixed bus he would have to transfer to to get to campus. So, it's not just faculty and staff. It's also some students that rode the CC buses when it came down West College, who are no longer able to rely on the CC any longer, and who also have to rely on CADA go. I also am kind of puzzled with regard to the driver shortage, because I have spoken with a number of drivers who have said that they, there are, there are drivers that are not able to obtain 40 hours, that a lot of them are working below, well below 40 hours, and are wanting to drive more, but unfortunately are not allowed to for whatever reason. So, I'm really confused about the driver shortage, when I, it seems to me that there are drivers that are willing to meet the demand, but are being denied the number of hours that they're, that they desire. And I guess, let me see, I do take, I do, I have a ride pass. I work on campus. I work at Penn State Libraries. The time that it would take me on, when the CC bus was still running, from the time I would leave my house and walk a quarter of a mile to the time I would get to the library, even though I would be dropped off at Sklo Library, it would take about a half an hour tops, about, in total. And now, it's a crapshoot. It can take twice that long, just because scheduling the pickup, you don't know what time it's going to show up. This morning, I had scheduled the pickup, and it, I think it was 18 minutes, but it kept getting pushed back. It went from 18 minutes to 20 minutes to 20. And it was like, until it was finally getting to the point where I was not going to make the bus I needed to connect to, the RC bus outside of CADA, the RC Shelter stop is where I would normally take CADA go to pick up the Shelter outside of the CADA Garage on Research Drive, that would take me to the Penn State Libraries. The RC bus would take me to the Penn State Libraries. I was going to miss that bus if I waited any longer, so I ended up having to call Uber. When I got home this evening on the RC, the quickest, the CADA go was going to be able to come and get me was in 30 minutes, and it was freezing outside. And so, I took an Uber from the bus stop. It was just a lot quicker and easier. And I'm just kind of finding that I'm spending more and more money to travel barely three and a half miles. And it seems to be the most inefficient way to get to work in the morning. And so, yeah, I think that, well, definitely one of the solutions I would propose is to have, to at least, especially since the CC, or have, either have the RC bus come into this area. And I understand that the RC doesn't even run during the summertime, so I'm not sure what bus I would connect to once the spring semester is over. But I would recommend that there be at least a few routes in the morning, the CC bus run from here to campus, at least a few times in the, or to Sklo Library where it used to run, and a few times in the evening. And I, it would take, now it takes me three times longer to get home in the evening than it did on the CC. So, yeah, that's, I'm in the same boat with Roseanne, and then probably a host of others. And I'm hoping for some, some type of compromise here that would help getting through this winter be a little easier. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to our next speaker, and I just want to ask everyone to keep their comments just a few minutes, as we're really taking quite a bit of time on this item. And I want to hear everybody's public comments. I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. So, if you take just a few minutes to share your thoughts. And I think up next was Yulen. And if you could please give us your name and your township of residence. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a Ferguson Township resident. I have a similar concern after they, you know, exclude the College Connector to the Bristol Avenue. I was thinking, you know, for the now, there's RC loop, so I don't know why it will be difficult for RC loop to extend a little bit to the Bristol Avenue. You may even pass like Bristol Avenue, Stone Bridge Apartments. That's actually probably more, you know, people to ride bus there. Then go back maybe to Blue Cross, back to the, you know, probably original RC loop. I would think that's an easy, probably, change or modification. There may take more riders, actually, along the Bristol Road and the Blue Cross Avenue. So, that kind of suggestion to maybe able to make change to accommodate, you know, the riders that at Bristol or areas that I think probably Stone Bridge area. So, that's what I think.
Thank you so much. And next, I believe, is Darlene, if you could give us your name and township of residence?
Hi, I'm Darlene Gashu, and I live out here in Ferguson. I've been a CADA writer since the 80s. And I live out here, I lived out here before there was a Waffle Shop. So, the fact that campus and life seems moving west is why we need more service and not less service, frankly. I agree with everything that everybody has said so far. CADA go just isn't going to work. If I wanted to use an app for a service like that, I'd just Uber every day. And I don't want to do that. We are talking about a three to four mile trip for most of us. And getting on a bus in town and riding less than a minute to Butt Street, and then having to get back connected the rest of the way, I'm sorry, it's just, it's ridiculous. The whole precedent, to me, is ridiculous. Possible solutions would be, if there was a bus stationed there every day that we could count on, okay. But I agree with maybe moving that connector a bit further west to make it easier. But I think what really needs to happen is to go back to using a smaller bus that we used to have when we had service all the way out to Pine Grove. And that would be two trips in town in the morning and two trips out at night. And that bus, that smaller bus, was filled most days. It only went away because of COVID, and then after COVID, it never came back. Our township, I think, because I had somebody do a little research into this, funds CADA quite nicely as far as municipalities are concerned. And yet, we're the first people to get cut service. And I just think that that needs to change. And I'm hoping that something changes way before fall, because waiting that long just seems unacceptable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. And next, I believe, is Karen, if you could give us your name and township of residence?
Hi, my name's Karen. I'm also a resident in Ferguson Township. I also take the bus along West College and Bristol stop, like Erin and Roseanne. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of data. I've also been trying out CADA go. And one of the days, I requested in the morning, and I had to wait 35 minutes for pickup. That's around or more than what one whole bus loop would have been when we used to have the bus. And so, that is basically equivalent to like me getting to the bus stop and missing the bus, just missing the bus and having to wait for another one. Another thing that happened to me once when I booked at 8:30 in the morning was that the app actually dropped my request, because it said that there was too much demand at 8:30 in the morning to use the CADA go to get into campus. And so, I think that sort of provides some maybe evidence that even a bus that comes a couple times in the morning and a couple times in the evening to our area would be useful, since it seems like a lot of us are commuting in and out. And I should mention that, like Patricia, I also live in the area, but I also don't own a car. And so, CADA is my only means of transportation. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I'm not seeing any. Okay, yes, and I'll invite you to come back up to the podium. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you all for your feedback. Actually, I have a specific question. If we were able to restore like a couple runs in the morning and a couple runs in the afternoon, what are the time periods that would work for you folks? Anybody?
And I'll look on, I'll look, I'm sorry. I'm hearing something over here. I'll look online here if, maybe Patty, or we can go back in order here of the folks who had commented. If anyone just wants to say so.
I would say that probably commuter hours, if you maybe started at 7:30, and maybe ran for an hour and a half. That, I mean, I have meetings over that way sometimes at the COG building at 8:15. So, but I would defer to the people who are actually commuting into campus.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, oh, I'm sorry, probably someone raised.
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree also. I mean, yeah, standard commuter hour is like seven to nine. I think the highest peak is right around eight or so, like between 7:30 and 8:30 is like the very most popular time.
Okay, thank you. And is it possible to get?
Between seven and 7:30.
Thank you. Is it possible to get contact information for these folks, so we can follow up with them and have further conversation? You don't, okay.
To directly contact you?
Sure.
That would probably be easiest, and that's something we could, you know, I'm sure we can have something easily available.
Something too. On our webpage, we'll provide information about this presentation, and we certainly can provide information that you would like folks to reach out to you by email or by phone number.
That would be fine. My email address is D R I S H E L at catibus.com. So, feel free to reach out to me directly.
I can add that into, to the webpage posting.
Because we appreciate your feedback, esp- and I heard a few things about the CADA go app. That should not be the case. So, that concerns me. We'll look into those.
Thank you. Could you repeat your email address really quickly, in case I'm reading it down?
It's D R I S H E L, D R I S H E L at catibus.com.
Thank you. It's fantastic. Thank you so much. Anything else from the board? And we very much appreciate you coming back up to the podium. So, I just want to make sure we've covered all of our bases. I'll go to Jeremy first, since you were last, first round.
Yeah, thank you so much for your feedback, and I thank our residents as well. Here and a lot of them do reside in the area that I represent within the township. I just want you to know, I've heard your feedback, and I appreciate your feedback. And would encourage you to contact David moving forward, and to encourage anyone else that might have feedback to reach out to CADA and speak.
Patty, anything else? No, okay.
Yeah, I just want to echo Mr. Thompson's sentiments as well, and thank the residents for going ahead and contributing to a conductive and, you know, effective conversation this evening with coming to the table with some options, right? Things that we might be able to do. And Mr. Richel, thank you for listening, and taking into account that, hey, there's a place for feedback, and maybe we can make some changes to accommodate the folks that are having the concerns. I will say, this is great for me on a personal level, too. I did attempt to use the CADA go app back on October 5th. I had to look the date up. I did not find it to be usable, unfortunately. But I'm glad to hear also that there are videos and other training aids that might be out there right now to, you know, aid there. So, thank you for that. And again, I just want to thank everybody for the conversation tonight.
And to clarify, the CADA app we're using now was just implemented on the 18th of December. So, it's completely different service, completely different app. We're still working a few bugs out, but much more functional.
Thanks for noting that. Amari, anything else?
Just echo everyone, thank you for solving the problem.
That's why we're here.
Thanks so much for coming. Thanks for the presentation and being so open to the feedback and working to resolve some things that were presented tonight. Very much appreciated. And thanks to the residents. These are exactly the kinds of issues that I'd been receiving some communications about. And you all just stated so clearly what the issues were that you were having. And like others have said, the suggestions on how to, how to solve some of these immediate, immediate issues. So, thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the manager, did you need a motion from us to receive this presentation, or?
It's up to the board. It's not necessarily.
Okay, I think we'll move forward. We will move to an update on the solar power purchase agreement. And that is with our guest Pam Adams. And I'll ask you to come on up to the podium.
All right. Nice to see you all. My name's Pam Adams. I'm a Sustainability Planner at the Center Region Council of Governments. And tonight, I'm going to provide a high-level overview on the power purchase agreement. I know that there's a couple new people here, and some, this has not been talked about all the time. But we are working on putting a Power Purchase Agreement 101 together tomorrow with CNET that will go into twice as much detail as this. But I'm also here to answer questions. But I'm going to try to give you a good overview. Oh, I'm going to go quick.
Done.
So, basically, I'll start with the who, go through the different who, what, why, and how kind of thing. So, there's 12 organizations that are currently in the Power Purchase Agreement Working Group. And there's representatives from each of those organizations. We meet monthly. Dave Modrekker is your current representative for representing Ferguson Township. You'll see that it's municipalities, as well as the school district and other organizations, some county organizations. So, this is not a COG, Center Region COG project. This is 12 organizations within center county that are working on this collaboratively. You can go to the next slide. So, we did the who, and now we're going to talk about the why. Basically, when this working group was formed, it was in 2019, we wanted to all align on what we're doing. You know, why are we in this room? Why are we working on this project? So, we defined these guiding principles. And you could see that a major initiative is the fiduciary responsibility, right? We want to keep costs low, keep them set, as well as help with budget volatility. When you're looking at electricity prices, and if you see the gas station prices, energy in general, prices can go up and down, up and down, depending on politics, world policy, you know, wars and stuff like that. So, help having a certainty with budget for 15 years or more can be helpful to local government. Another piece of it is to really look at, you know, what is our impact, and how can we help reduce emissions to mitigate the effects of climate change? We also want to look at the solar market and job growth in Pennsylvania. If we can make that part of our project, we thought that was valuable. We also understand that there's a lot of need for education and being leaders. And so, that is important. We've had a lot of informed elected officials over this four or five years by talking about this project, as well as staff has been learning a lot. And we're really trying to also include the public as much as we can. And even more of that will happen if and when this project comes to, you know, the final finish line. And then, with putting solar in the grid in Pennsylvania, that can help diversify our energy sources, and it can help reduce our dependence on fossil fuel. And then finally, we want to be good neighbors. So, if we're putting a project in, we want to make sure it's aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors, that it's okay. So, we talked about the who and the why, but what is a power purchase agreement? So, the first thing is, is basically, the 12 organizations are aggregating a percentage of their electricity together. And for Ferguson Township, the board elected to put 90% of their electricity into this solar power project. And so, the buyers, that's us, have, are looking to make a contract with a solar developer. So, that solar developer is going to build a solar array. They know how much it's going to cost. They can get financing. And so, then we'll pay a monthly, an annual, well, monthly fee, an annual fee, so that he gets the project paid for, and we get a fixed rate. And our fixed rate, in this case, is 15 years with two five-year extensions if we choose. So, that's that first piece, where we agree to help that solar developer be able to build his solar array. In return, In return, they, and this is the step two, will give us that electricity, that energy from that project. So that energy is devoted to us on the grid. It all goes through the PJM grid. We're not responsible paying for, you know, that, that electricity goes to us. But with renewable energy, you have two pieces to it. There's the energy, the electricity that comes off of it, but there's also renewable energy credit. So there's two markets. Those RECs can either be, we can own them or the developer can own them. They're Pennsylvania compliance RECs, so they're about $30 per kilowatt hour. That's almost doubling the price of what our rate would be. So collectively as the 12 organizations, we decided that the developer will keep those RECs and for those that need to meet clean energy goals, we can purchase, you can purchase your own RECs at like three cents, four cents, not the compliance RECs. More detail than maybe you need to know, but, so there's those two pieces. Then the final thing is just that not all of our electricity is going to come from solar. Obviously at night, we're not getting solar and in the summer and winter, there's different amounts of solar. As well as 90% of your electricity, you say is coming from solar, but that other 10%, we still need the traditional utility. So there are all these pieces that go into this project. That's basics of what it is. And then there's multiple benefits that we're getting by working with 12 organizations on this joint power purchase agreement. First, by working together, we're able to do this. Ferguson Township doesn't have enough electricity by itself to do a power purchase agreement. Ferguson Township has put solar on their Public Works Building, which is great, but the additional amount of electricity being put now into a power purchase agreement with the school district, with the State College Borough Water Authority allows it to be a better project, more efficient use of a power purchase agreement. And then this peer network, by working with 12 organizations that we haven't worked with before, we're all learning a lot from each other and using each other's expertise as well as hopefully building relationships that we can do some pretty impressive projects in the future. And then the other four are about cost. You know, you get a better economy of scale, we're cost sharing so that having a consultant and legal fees, we're all putting pieces into it and we're able to get part of this large-scale deal, right? By making ourselves bigger, more developers are interested. And again, it's back to that lowering our market risk by working collectively together. So then how are we doing this? And this is where the PowerPoint 101 goes through a lot more of the detail, but basically we started these discussions in 2019. The working group was formed, sorry, initiated in 2018. Working group, first meeting was in 2019. We walked through the process of a cost-sharing agreement and got that signed right around the COVID. But basically with cost-sharing, we split the costs based on each organization's electricity usage. So the school district, their amount of electricity portion is 46%, so they pay 46% of the total fee. So that's how that has been determined and that took a while to work out and get signed. And then we also recognized that we needed technical expertise. The people that are on the project management team and, and the working group, we're all learning as we go. We have some solar expertise that has been on it, but there wasn't any one person that could lead this. So hiring an energy services consultant has been very helpful, which we did in 2021. Then they've helped us put together a package for a solar, sorry, a request for proposals. And all of these points along the way, we've had the working group member come back to the board with information on getting board approval and council. So it does take a while, but it's partly because of the process that's set up that each board and council, we want input along these different milestones. So we are currently at the point of almost signing contracts at the finish line, I would say, of a very long project, but it's a very complicated project in a lot of ways. All right. So when I sort of talked about the power purchase agreement, the way the structure for our PPA is, is that we have a contract with the solar developer. When we put out that request for proposals, we got nine different projects back and we've selected one with Prospect 14. They're a Pennsylvania-based solar developer company and that contract will be for 15 years. So we're setting our price for 15 years. And each organization defines their amount of electricity that they want to get from that solar array. Like I said, Ferguson Township said, defined it as 90%. That price is fixed and I will go through what that rate is as well as there is an escalator and there's settlement costs. And basically settlement cost is for solar. It doesn't run at night, so you're buying traditional fossil fuel as well as in the summer, there's different points. And so on the grid, you're purchasing and buying electricity and the operators in the background are making all that happen, but there is variability with solar. So that's the one piece to it. The retailer is the other piece that we did the request for proposals and got selected direct energy. They will manage all of that working stuff in the background for us and that contract is for five years. So they will manage that solar as well as that other 10% of electricity that you need and that will be at a fixed price or left. Each organization has some flexibility on how they want to manage that traditional fossil fuel. The working group organization and staff has received the five contracts. We just got them last week and we're going through them. They have gone through the consultant, they've gone through the solicitor's legal review and the top two are ones that Ferguson Township has had in the past in the sense the way you used to, well, the way you currently or normally handle electricity contracts is that you procure it on a one-to-five-year basis and you have a set rate for that time period. Going forward, and that's what that commodity master agreement and transaction confirmation are, so those are things that we're already familiar with. The three at the bottom are new and the orange ones are with direct energy. The tri-party agreement is basically saying all organizations, the three parties will work together. And then the power purchase agreement master is with Prospect 14. So I'm not going to go into the details of all those because we, as a project management team, are preparing a presentation for the working group on January 24th, going into a lot more of that detail. And I'm not an expert on all of this. We'll have the consultant there because there's a lot of legalese, but I will say that they have really been working to get it tight and to reduce our risks so that if there's default, no default, trying to make sure that this project is pretty solid, very solid. So if you go to the next slide, going back to my graph before of the basically triangle, the buyers and the renewable energy developer, that's going to be our contract with the solar developer. The developer is going to keep the RECs. The piece that goes behind moving the electricity to us between the utility, which is West Penn Power, is all going to be handled by the retailer, right? The general person in the finance office is going to see a bill that comes in and not have to be managing all of that in the background. So I just want to make sure people understand that once this is all signed and everybody agrees to it as the, all 12 organizations, the monthly invoices will be about the same and we'll all have electricity 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All right. So let's talk about rates and what the costs are. So as I said, the rate will be fixed and the dark blue at the bottom is our electricity rate. And in year one, it's set at .0459 dollars per kilowatt. So basically 4.5, 4.6 cents per kilowatt hour. That is fixed rate, but there's an escalator. So in year 10, multiply that out and year 15, that's how you get, it's a fixed rate, but with an escalator. The light blue portion are where there's fees. Currently, we pay for the grid pass-through fee and the retail adder fee. Everybody in, with electricity rates pays that and it's about 70, 75%. Actually, it's probably 80. I didn't figure out that calculation, but most of the rate of that .0208 are the top two. Because of the power purchase agreement, we will be paying that management fee to direct energy and we're also going to have an ongoing services contract. Did you guys get this by any chance in the agenda packet? So in here, it has the detailed numbers of what that PPA management is .0021 and the new group service contract is .00123. So there is a fee, but that's defined over the year one to five. Like we, we don't quite know what that, those fees could change over time, but we put in some estimates of what the increases could be. Where there is variability is in that orange, that settlement cost because solar is different when you buy and sell and it's different in the summer and it's different in the winter. The consultant has indicated, and this is based on looking at past as to how things will perform in the future, variability is around that point, plus or minus 5%. So that means the rate will be somewhere between .06 and .069, sorry, 64 and 69 for year one. Move that out to year 10 and year 15, that's where the rates are. I talked to Faith today at Ferguson Township and on the November bill, Ferguson Township was paying 8.9 cents, I'll say, I think is what the rate is. So the fact that we can lock in rates closer to the seven cents in 2026 when this starts and have it increase over time seems to be very in line with a fiscally responsible action. If you go to the next slide, the consultant puts together these future market prices. This is something that they have access and can get data on. This is what the current predictions of electricity portion of energy costs will be. And that blue line is what their predictions for market rates are. And you could see it's between five and six cents going up a little bit in 2026. The dotted line is our PPA price, which is fixed at .0459. And our average bill rate is going to fluctuate around that PPA price based on that solar So there's lots of ways we can do potential, you know, we can project out savings and I did one for State College Borough Water Authority and the reason I did that is because they have put out for a contract, you know, I said there's, we typically do one to, three to five-year contracts. They contracted for 2025, which is the closest one I know that's gone that far out to when our PPA will start. Cog, we're currently in a contract for .66, something like that. But in 2025, the Borough Water Authority in December is saying at, at the end of December 2025, they would be paying .0735. That's the number on the right. On the left is our PPA rate that will kick in as soon as the solar array is being built, which is end of 2025, 2026. So if you look at the difference between 069 and 0735, it is .0045. Then I multiply that by their kilowatts and come up with 21,000. If I take the, the lower number of our rate, if solar performs better in a way or it's a very productive year, we could be paying 064. So there is a range of where savings could be in year one if I compare it to what the State College Borough Water Authority's rate is. And if you take that collectively for everybody, it's 124,000 to 263,000 in year one. For Ferguson Township, I did calculate and it's like 2,500 to 5,000 because your kilowatt usage is like 525,000. So there are costs to this project and there's the time. We have not taken everybody's time. We've had lots of meetings and have been working on this, but as far as taxpayer dollars going to consultant and legal review, I've identified here for the total for the working group, we've locked in and there's been no additional fees that will be incurred other than maybe continuing to pay the bills, is 234,725. So that's the total expense that's for this project. And Prospect 14, recognizing that the legal fees were higher than we had anticipated, has offered to pay 60,000 back to the working group once we hit certain milestones, that one of which is when we sign contracts, everybody will get a certain portion back related to their cost sharing. The second milestone is, I think, sort of a work order when they can start on the land and then the final one is the operation of the project. So that the total actual cost will be 174,725. And then you can see the numbers for what Ferguson Township portion of that expense is. So the payback is in one to two years, I guess is what the important piece is, if we see those projected savings. And then this is the last slide is just talking about the next steps. Our work, next working group meeting is at the January 24th where we'll be going through the contract in detail and you're welcome to invite your solicitor if you think that's something that's helpful to attend that. The consultant will be there to walk through the contracts in more detail. The idea then is that it goes out to the boards and councils for review, for comments, for questions. It is anticipated that those contracts have gone through a lot of review, but we understand people might have questions. We're not hoping to have 12 different little contracts changed with a lot of details, but we want people's input in case there's some good idea. We think everybody has good ideas, but it is trying to mostly make sure you understand them and what you're signing. We'll have a special meeting February 14th so that we get those comments. Again, one of the benefits of working with 12 organizations is everybody is going to be bringing questions and then we can create a frequently asked questions and learn from each other what people are concerned about or what they don't understand so that we can make sure that everybody has a solid understanding of it. Have another meeting February 14th to wrap up those questions and comments so that then they will, the working group can forward it out to boards and councils for approval in March and then sign the contracts in April. And that is all I have, so you can, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. And we'll go to board, questions and comments. We can start here in the room. I was going to start with Patty, but I don't see Patty up there. So say Patty, if you have any comments or questions, we can go ahead and start with you.
No, I don't have any, but thank you Pam. It's, it's exciting. I feel like we're getting closer and closer.
Me too.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start at this end. Omari?
Thank you ma'am. I don't care. Couple of things, there was a dollar sign in one of the slides that was pointing from the organizations, the 12, to the developer. That wasn't accurate, right? There's no dollar, it's the, everything's going, the township's receiving one bill, right? And it's going to have two line items?
Correct. We won't be paying the developer, we'll be paying direct energy.
Okay. So your slide is wrong or is there another meeting to, meeting to that line?
The meeting was that we, the developer will be getting that cost, but he gets it through the grid and he sets the rate of what we're paying, but we will not be paying the developer, we'll be paying, yeah, so I should have it go through that too?
I would recommend everything go through the retailer so everybody's clear. It's one bill and there's two lines that say, you know, utility gets five cents, well, you know, 500 bucks in this, you know?
Nope, they should all go through the retailer.
You've, in, in your monologue or in your, your presentation, you had, you, you said several times like 2026, well, maybe 2025, 2026. There's, I'm curious, when is, you know, is, has developer started doing things and you're, you've kind of voiced over some things that you know in the background? Just curious about that.
Yeah, so the developer in the contract drop dead date is October 2026, I think. I don't have the exact date. So they're making it very safe that they will have it by 2026, but they have started the process. The project's actually in Walker Township in Center County and they're walking through the process, but they have to deal with the PJM, they have to deal with other processes. It's a developer and things could be, take them longer and all that kind of stuff. I don't know when it's going to be. I'm hoping it's 2025, but it could be 2026. We will know closer when that is, but they have not given an estimated date.
Thank you. It's been a while since I heard a last update, so I'm glad they have the land and that's moving forward. Okay, great.
Yep, yep. They've got everything in approval.
And then last question you mentioned, there was kind of some rebate from the developer for 60K. That sounds weird, but maybe it's less weird than I think.
So basically earlier this year, there was a lot of concern about So basically, earlier this year, there was a lot of concern about the legal costs. And a lot of organizations were feeling stretched and like, maybe there was a problem with this project, and was the developer really committed? And so he made a commitment. He wants the project to happen. So to make it more palatable for folks, he offered to pay back, pay for a portion of that legal fee. So he offered three milestones. So in the contract, there'll be three milestones in which he will reimburse us for the project because it's valuable to him. Does that make sense?
We may, the solicitor, I mean, has it been good with the solicitor on developers kicking refunding or money to organizations that are? Anyway, I'm done. That's all.
Yeah, did you want, I'll look to the manager.
Yeah, so that decision really has been held with COG, General Forum. So I would say as the, I know we've had quite a few presentations, and so the representatives through the SPPA meetings over the last four years. But with specific interest to your question on the solicitor for SPPA agreement, there was a presentation that was brought to General Forum, I think about a year ago, maybe less than that. And the decision was to advance forward. And I understand it was the school district that covered the, the legal fees. And at that time, the elected officials gave consensus and support to advance forward. So because this isn't really a township item, I can't speak directly on all of the conversations that were had. But I haven't heard any opposition or concern about the legal representation. I will share, however, that in conversations with the township solicitor, as you all know, she represents Patton Township as well as the county. It's my understanding that there's some coordination efforts for her to be present. And she's on the call this evening as well. So while there is legal representation for this item, as agreed by General Forum, our township solicitor is following this very closely and is having conversations with me in terms of what, if any, red flags. And as of now, we don't, we don't have concerns. But she's certainly on the, she's, she's with us this evening if there are questions.
Yeah, maybe it's just to, just to be careful. We're receiving money back from an organization, a developer.
We aren't.
Well, it's got $1,148 back from Ferguson. That's, it's on there in some ways.
Yeah, and I'll invite our solicitor to clarify anything she'd like to, or Pam maybe would be a better.
I can't, but I think, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not sure that the actual process on how it will all happen. I just know everybody was overwhelmed by the legal fees. And so I don't know if they'll pay it directly to the solicitor. Like, so I apologize, I don't, hadn't connected all those dots. But I don't know. We've had many people part of the conversation and haven't heard that as a red flag. But I hear what you're saying.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm done. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Just a question. I was looking for, prior to this, maybe a return on investment or what the township was going to be saving in all of this. Did I hear it would be about $3,000 to $5,000 a year for Ferguson?
2,500 to 5,000, based on that variability. That's the projection for the first year, yeah.
So if we expand that out by 15 years, we're talking about $75,000 worth of savings just for Ferguson. That doesn't, no offense, seem like a lot for Ferguson. So I'm wondering who the big winner is in this.
The school district. They have 46, they're, if you want to think of them as the anchor or the elephant, they're, they're the ones, 46% of their electricity is in this project. 52% of the total is the school district. So they're seeing a big, the State College Borough Water Authority, you saw their savings up there. They're also getting a piece of it. So it aligns with sort of some of their clean energy goals, which the school district and the Borough Water Authority do not have. It's more that fiduciary, reduce costs, but also budget certainty. Because what we don't know, well, we do know how the markets performed in the last 15 years. So it jumps around a lot. And if your contract runs out in the wrong year, sometimes you're at 11 cents, or you're at nine cents. I mean, Ferguson Township is currently at nine cents. Your savings will be greater, but it depends on what your rate is, what the market rate is. And so when we had the war in Ukraine, rates were at 13 cents. Like, it just, some years, it might go up a lot more, but we're trying to be very conservative in our estimates as far as what we think it could be, because we don't, we don't know.
Okay, no, and I appreciate that. So when we think about the SCASD being the one who benefiting the most, we'll say, what dollar amount does that look like for them? I'm just curious.
So it could be 75 to $150,000 a year, which could basically be a teacher, right? That's how they're kind of looking at it, is that it's helping them reduce their costs. It is not, you know, millions of, over, over the time. It could be significant for all of us. If you take everybody combined, it's 1.8 million over 15 years.
And that's a number that I think resonates with a lot of folks when we hear that. So that's an important one.
It is. It's just, again, it's projecting out things that, you know, we don't know what energy market prices are going to be, but we're pretty comfortable with year one. So I just like to put it in perspective. But if you look at it over that time period, it's 1.8 million for all 15, so, or 12 organizations, so yes.
Okay, great. So looking at the positives, we'll say 75,000 for Ferguson, over 15 years approximately, again, just some rough estimates. Does that also then mean, I guess I'll look to staff to answer this, that we have a low-risk profile? I mean, if things go south with all of this, does that mean, okay, we miss out on $3,000 to $5,000 of savings a year? Or is there something more significant that we're on the hook for if things do go south? And maybe that's a question for the solicitor as well. It seems like a low risk to me, which also then means I probably wouldn't be investing a lot of staff time and everything else in this and just saying, okay, that, it's a cost savings, and we move forward. And that we don't spend so much time, solicitors, if we are, et cetera, investigating this or looking at the legalese. Just a comment.
It's probably low risk and helps us meet our sustainability goals. Is how I would summarize it.
Yeah, when we sort of looked at different rates, market prices that could go up and down, there's more risk if market rates go up to not have this PPA, because it's very likely that rates are going to go up. Rates could come down during COVID. They were very low at a certain time. But we've seen those dips just a few times. So it, there's more benefit, so I shouldn't say risk if it goes up, but more benefit if it goes, if rates go up. So that, we've kind of looked at it a lot, but I would agree you're getting your clean energy goals at a rate that's comparable with today. So you're kind of locking in your health insurance rates for 15 years. It's going to keep things simpler every three to five years. You don't have to go out and look for new contracts.
No, I appreciate that. And it gets really back to the idea of smoothing, like we saw earlier from our discussion this evening. So thank you. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, I am glad to hear that you're working on a presentation with CNET. I think that will, I think that is beneficial, that us as local government is getting the facts and the information out there to help answer any questions that have come through skepticism or even misinformation being disseminated through social media or talk radio. You may have actually answered this question to me before, but just for clarity, is the developer going to be responsible moving forward for the ongoing maintenance and even possible replacement of the solar array? Okay.
Yep, yep. There's a performance guarantee in the contract, and it's, we don't maintain or own or do any of it. That's all their responsibility.
I know there's, has, has been some concerns expressed around that, but at the end of the day, it's not going to be us that are responsible for that.
And, and if it doesn't perform, we still get our electricity. They just have to pay the difference so that we get our rate that we're locked into.
And this might be more of a question for staff. I was kind of wondering if, I, well, I guess since the manager had expressed that the township solicitor has been following this quite closely, I, I was just wondering if our township solicitor was basically going to see these contracts and would possibly at least let us know if there was anything we needed to take into consideration. I don't necessarily want to jump on this without knowing that it is well-vetted locally within Ferguson Township.
Yes, great question. And the solicitor has been provided with the agreement and the information that was provided to you as a board by email. And it's my understanding that the solicitor will also be at the meeting on the 24th, and she is also available via Zoom. It looks like she just turned on her video. So I will yield to her if she has any comments.
I do have the agreements, and I will participate in the meeting on the 24th. And I, I am reviewing this on behalf of three of you, which is Patton, Ferguson, and the county. Again, as you know, relatively small players in the process, but three participants nonetheless. And my intent is to split all of my time between the three of you for billing purposes, et cetera. But I do know, and Pam can speak to this, that I don't, you know, I get, I get your point, Jeremy, about looking at the agreements and feeling comfortable. I, I also know that this isn't an opportunity to nitpick details and look through things. It's more about how this fits into what other agreements that the township typically approves and so forth.
Anything else? Thanks. And I guess I'll just go off on, on that. And Pam had mentioned how the legal fees were more than had been anticipated because of the complexity of this. And so there was a lot of time spent on formulating these contracts, because this is a pretty new type of agreement and venture with so many different public entities. So it's pretty unique. It's pretty, you know, forward-thinking. So I think there's a lot of time invested in crafting these contracts. And even prior, with that firm, even prior to our own solicitor, looking at those. So, so that's good. So I'm looking at the timeline. So my assumption is in February, then, we will have an opportunity. It'll be on our agenda. I'm anticipating to ask questions about the contracts. We'll have been able to review those at that time. And then in March, it should be on our agenda again for approval, is what I'm seeing here.
I will look to Pam for confirmation if the intent for February 14th is to have it back on the municipal agendas, or is that just the SPPA? I'm unsure myself.
Yeah, so the point of February is for the board and councils to ask questions. So I, if, you know, how you want to get that feedback from the board is typically a meeting, I think, but yes. And then the March one should be, here's the answers, you know. But yes, we're trying to collate everybody's questions and answers and feedback so that we make sure everybody understands things. And I will just say on the, the legal side of things, our initial thought was that the school district solicitor was going to be able to help us with the legal review. And once this project got underway, no local solicitor was really interested in taking on all five of these contracts, because they didn't have that background. So we went out and with the consultant in the school district, they identified somebody who's done power purchase agreements like this before, not with 12 organizations, but has a good, a vast amount of expertise and comes at a very high price. And then the last thing I'll mention is that we're doing the CNET video, which will be available to everybody, hopefully by the end of January. And we're also planning to have some workshops for newly elected officials who are interested in learning more about this, which will build upon our PPA and answer questions, as well as anybody who needs a refresher. So we're trying to make sure everybody is comfortable and understands the process as well as the project.
Great. Okay, anything else for Pam on this? All right, not seeing anything. So conversation will continue next month. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will move to a discussion for consideration on a time extension for presentation of the Ferguson Township audit and final report of audit. And we'll go to Todd Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. At the regular meeting on January 2nd, we had a discussion about the annual audit and requesting the time extensions. So this is a, this evening, we're asking the board to consider approving the time extension from April 15th to July 31st of 2024, just for this year, for the presentation and final report of the audit. And I have reached out to Baker Tilly, and we have a schedule and a plan of attack.
Okay. Would anyone care to make the motion?
No, no, no. Okay.
This is Madam, make a motion that the board supervisors move to approve the time extension for the audit presentation and final report to the board no later than July 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Is Omari a second?
Okay. Any discussion on this item? We'll start over here.
The, if I recall correctly, it's in our charter to have this done by April. And so we're talking about extending it. And I think, I can't remember when we talked about this. There was like intent of what needs to be done by April versus what can be done later. Can you, can someone clarify, Madam Manager? What is this as a related discussion that we had before about timelines?
Right, so we are bringing to the board for consideration approval of a presentation of the audit and the final report no later than the end of July. Understanding that the ordinance is, well, perhaps even based on the, the former conversation, it's unclear what the intent was. Understanding that the, the historical dates for the presentation and the final report have been staggered for the last 10 years with a level of inconsistency. And so moving forward, we recognize that there, you know, there can be a bit of a, I don't want to say nuisance, but a series of steps to change the charter. As an alternative, the board had suggested a time extension request. So we provided the timeline.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, if amenable, I, well, I have something, but I'll do it after everybody's spoken. How about that?
No comments. I have no further comment.
Patty, anything? Nothing on this? Okay.
If I may, I'd like to move that we amend the motion to keep the April event, whatever that may be, however, with a July final report.
So, just so I'm interpreting this correctly. So this, the motion that's currently on the table would move, would just allow the time extension until July 31st. So the April date remains there. This is just permitting the time extension up to July 31st. So what your amendment would do?
Was, is keep the, there are some things going to happen in April. There's a meeting that someone says, here's a thing we've done preliminarily, and that July is the, okay, now we're done officially, and here's the final.
So you want an update?
Correct, correct. Because of what the ordinance, because of what a charter says, I'd like to make sure that we're still kind of keeping to the intent, which I think if I, if I saw those dates correctly, we were doing some things in April, sometimes May, sometimes June, sometimes April, over the last 10 years. And so, all right, well, I think someone was trying to keep to the intent. So let's do that with the, with the preliminary, with the final being in July.
We can take that back. I mean, the board appointed Baker Tilly to serve as the audit, so we can let them know that your preference is that there is a presentation by April 15th and let you know what they, what they shared. I mean, staff works with the appointed auditor. They've shared the, you know, the concerns that they have. So if that's the motion the board would like to make, then, then we will move in that direction.
Right, so it would not necessarily be a, a final report on the audit at that point, but it would be a, and.
Preliminary?
A, well, it could. I'm not clear that they would have that even at that point, but some type of update.
That's what I would just share, is that they could be in the process of the assessment and still doing testing. But we could certainly ask them to come and give an update on their process.
Yeah, and I'll look to Mr. Grady for any.
Like a status report?
Yeah, on the process.
Where, where we're at?
Maybe. And I say maybe because whatever has been, again, there's precedence over the last 10 years that was shared. And, and it really, and I think in those, in the, the numbers, it was, there was something done in April. Maybe it was a preliminary. But even in those 10 years is when the final. But even in those 10 years is when the final report was done, was never April. So either we say, like, I just can't remember, in that last meeting we had, that there was kind of something that happened versus when the final was released. And the final was never in April. I get it. I just want to kind of keep to the consistency that was of these last 10 years, or not. And then, so I'm suggesting that we keep to it. And so whatever was done over the last 10 years, whether it was a, hey, we come to you with a status report, or he's a preliminary, or here's some, you know, initial things we can share, and then we'll share the rest in July, then let's just keep to that, what that 10-year cycle kind of events was. And formalize that, we will formalize that in July, thou shall have the final.
I'll look back to the manager again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to pull up the agenda, because I recall when I was reviewing those dates, the presentation was not always in April. It was sometimes in May. And so I just want to acknowledge that I don't know that we always had that presentation done in April, which is our concern. But we can certainly ensure that there's a presentation on process in April. Or if they have a preliminary report done, we can ensure that they're scheduled for an April meeting for some type of update. And I mean, there's a, you know, they would, they would just, I guess my question would be to the board, do you want them to give a presentation on process and a presentation on the drafted report? And the final report? Do you want to embed a third step in the process?
Right, well, I wouldn't want to eliminate the presentation on the final report. I think this is important. I'm comfortable asking for a preliminary report at some point. I think that's what you're alluding to, to get something just in April, whatever it is.
We should stick to our charter, I think.
Yeah, right, and that would remain. All this is doing is allowing a time extension to receive the final audit up until July. And so knowing that that's been the case, and so now just formalizing that in the motion. So, but I think it's, you know, if we want to request, you know, the, something preliminary from them at a presentation in April is fair. So if you wanted to amend the motion, if you want to restate your amendment, and we'll take a motion on your amendment.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, Lisa?
Yes.
I just wanted to, I mean, I'm not sure I agree with that only because is that like another bill that we'll be paying for Baker Tilly to come?
Yeah.
If it's not necessary?
Right, I would think we would have to pay for an additional presentation if we were doing that.
I mean, I'd rather just ask for an extension than pay another couple hundred dollars for a presentation. That's just my two cents.
And Patty, I agree with you, except for our charter says something needs to happen in April, and we should do what that something is. That's all I'm saying. I really don't, I don't want to add a process or add dollars. It's about kind of meeting the charter. Again, over the last 10 years, we've done something. And so maybe it is something very, very simple that we need to do for this April. Kind of the charter says thou shall present at the April township meeting, if I recall correctly. So we should just do that, whatever it is. Look, I'm not trying, again, I'm not trying to add any dollars or unnecessary things. I just want to do the necessary, while also I agree giving staff the time to get this done. And April's not it. I agree.
So I'd suggest maybe in your motion to ask for an update from the finance director in April on status of the presentation of the final audit.
Okay, and Madam Chair, you think that that'll meet the intent of the charter?
Yeah, I mean, by doing this, we're extending the date that we're accepting that final presentation to July 31st. So I think incorporating a status update.
Very good. So then I move to amend the motion to add at the end with a status update by April, from the finance director.
Say by April 15th, which was the date in the?
Yes.
Is that the motion? Okay, is there a second on this amendment?
This is Madalena, second.
Okay, discussion on this amendment? And I'll ask the manager if you're comfortable with that. It'd be an update on, yeah, okay, from the finance director. Okay, any other discussion on that amendment to the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Okay, we've amended the motion, motion is second. Any other discussion on the amended motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no? Okay. Okay, all right. Make sure that wasn't a roll call before I move forward. Okay. So I'll ask, it's 10. Does anyone need to take a recess? Do we, or do we want to keep moving through? Okay, five-minute recess, okay. Okay, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess, and we will reconvene at about 10:06. Would someone care to make the motion?
This is Madalena Make a Motion that the Board of Supervisors move to authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to amend ordinance 1984, the regional human relations ordinance.
And is there a second?
This is Annabelle, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Not seeing any? All right, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed say no? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move to authorization for advertisement of a public hearing to amend the anti-discrimination ordinance. And we'll go back to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, same, at that time when the board adopted the anti-discrimination ordinance, there was just a few items procedurally that just needed to be revised. And the Borough, I don't know if I mentioned it in the previous one, the Borough had made the amendment in December of 2023, and Patton will be making the amendment in February or March of this year. And provided with the agenda are the comments. And the board this evening is asked to give authorization to amend the ordinance.
Thank you. Someone care to make the motion?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the advertisement for a public hearing to amend the ordinance.
Thank you, and is there a second?
This is Madalena, second.
All right, any discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed say no? All right. And moving on to informational update on contract 2023-C5 for consideration and discussion for direction on allocation of resources within Fund 20 specific to contracted services. And we'll go to Mr. Monbaker.
Thank you. Last year in 2023, the township awarded contract 2023-C5 Stormwater Cleaning and Video Assessment. All the work was not completed. There is a narrative there that gives you some details in terms of some of the issues that arose. And due to some of those issues, the work was stopped. We then had to think about how we were moving forward. There were some discharges that were not in accordance with the contract. In other words, some of the liquid with sediment was decanted into an open channel, earthen channel, and was not properly collected and brought back to the township. On a number of occasions, the stormwater engineer noticed some issues. I think by and large, a large portion of it was captured and brought here. And we had it set up here in our wash bay where we had the contractor's truck would collect it and then bring it up here, discharge it into a sediment sack. Liquid goes into the wash bay, then through an oil-water separator, and the material is disposed of properly. However, because of some of the issues that arose, all the work was not completed. And because of the issues that arose, we did negotiate a reduced dollar amount for the work completed in 2023. If we would like to complete the work within our budget amount of $190,000, then we would need a budget amendment in the amount of $91,424.55 to allow our contractor to complete the work properly this year in accordance with the contract, having learned some lessons.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and start with discussion if there's some comments or questions on this. Nothing? Patty, anything on this?
No.
And Matt, nothing? Amari?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I guess I'm reading that there needs to be, there needs to be a budget amendment. And four of you were up here amending the budget just a month or two ago. So why do we need to amend the budget? Was the dollars aren't in the budget for this work that we? Can I understand that, sir, please, or ma'am?
I think you just stated it, yes.
Well, I would first want to acknowledge that we would only need to do a budget amendment if we're 10% above expected expenditures, or below, well, yeah, above. And so we won't really know where we are with Fund 20 until later in the year. So there could be a potential budget amendment that would be required as we move through Q3, Q4. We'll have a better understanding. As you may recall, well, I mean, we're in this position which would acknowledge that last year we didn't expend all of the expenditures, right? So just depends on when contracts get started, and when the work gets completed, and when the township gets invoiced ultimately determines where we are. So by Q3, we'll evaluate where we are with our expenditures. We'll determine if we're over the budget, or if we're moving in that direction, at which point time, we may need to do a budget amendment. But it's appropriate to acknowledge that if we proceed, we do not have $90,000 in the budget for the continuation of this project. So the likelihood of it needing to have a budget amendment is there. And then I would also acknowledge, yes, that we would, we would, the boards, the request this evening is, does the board want to conclude this contract? And if you do, staff has negotiated to move forward, but it would require $90,000.
Thank you.
On location.
Right, so last year, this was a contracted project. It wasn't completed. We expected it to be completed, and the money was there last year. In December, since we still expected it to be completed last year, we didn't carry over any of those funds. So if we wish to complete the contract, we have to allocate the funds now, because we didn't carry them over like we did with the pipelining project. We carried over an amount, because we knew it wouldn't all be expended last year.
We carried over an amount because we knew it wouldn't all be expended last year to fulfill that contract.
So at some point, we realized, when did we realize this project was not going to finish?
A week before Christmas?
Late December.
After you already approved the budget. Okay, so that's when this issue happened that I'm reading here, was during Christmas?
Late December. Probably a week before Christmas, maybe?
That's what's coming to my mind. I recall just being at the table thinking, we're near Christmas and this is happening.
So this discharge happened, issue happened right around December when the budget was already approved? And so that's why the carryover didn't happen similar to the other projects?
Yes. Okay. When I became aware, I brought the issue up to the manager, and this is probably the first available time to bring it to your attention.
No, thank you. Silly question, when did this particular project start? Was this like over a six-month time period or nine-month time period that they were kind of doing it slowly and then boom, December, we got hit with this last-minute thing?
No, they could have started earlier, but they were delayed in mobilizing and getting to us and starting work. They got a good portion of it completed, but they didn't finish it.
Okay. And so what's their percent complete right now?
Probably 94 divided by 190. About 49, 50%.
Okay, so they're half done? And they did clean up at their own expense?
They did.
Okay. So this 90 is the remainder.
Remainder.
All right, so I guess, I guess at the end of the day, contractors doing what they have to do, they're cleaning it up, they're doing their living that they're in, they're going to get this done timely. And I think hearing that you said there was an opportunity to start a little earlier so that we didn't get a Christmas gift of a budget carryover, we could probably make sure that during the budget process, we've got most contracts kind of in the bag and maybe this unknown.
Yeah, our intent typically with especially road projects is get them out to bid in March.
Okay.
This one was a little more problematic, a little different. Certainly, the earlier we can get them out, the better, and that's our intent this year.
Thank you, sir. And there's a lot more of these, right? Like because of the cleanings throughout, this is MS4 thing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an annual contract.
Good to go. Thank you.
And if I may, just again try and remember the context here. The 190 that was allocated previously, that was a much higher rate or a larger number before we made some of the cuts in our budget discussion. That was this contract as well, correct? Or is that for?
No, this is actually from, the 190 would have been budgeted in the 2023 operating budget.
And then we looked at this for next year, and I think we made some cuts. Okay.
Right, yeah, you're correct. So the budget for this year would be?
Around 100, I believe.
Around 100, right, right.
Maybe even exactly 100.
I think it is. I think it is, so.
Yeah, we'll touch on levels of service, I think, here in the next item to kind of speak to that a little bit. So all good questions? Anything else? And if not, let's see, we did not take a motion yet, I think.
Was it, yeah, there's a recommended motion, but I did not state it. Do you want me to read it?
I was trying to remember if we took the motion.
So this is a preemptive motion? I mean, wait, because we need the money to do the work.
Well, right, so if we permit them to carry on as they're able to, then we want to know that we have that money there. There is, you know, like we just said, the $100,000 allocated, but that would be theoretically, and I'm looking to David to correct me, prescribed to a different project. So we wouldn't reallocate that 100 to this, the 100 that was planned for 2024.
I can say it, but maybe the manager wants to, so I'm looking at, okay. So as the manager stated earlier, the budget amendment's at the fund level, so it's Fund 20. So right now, we want to know that if we're going to move forward with this contract, that the board's committed that we'll pay the contractor. Later on in the year, if we see that Fund 20 is within budget and actually doesn't need to be amended because there's cost savings elsewhere, then you wouldn't need the budget amendment.
If I may, I mean, it's not often we get a chance to go back and say, maybe we can save some money, right? This is one of those opportunities, I think, and knowing how the discussion with cleaning and scoping and everything went a couple months ago, I see this as an opportunity to say, look, if we were able to reduce it down to the $100,000 coming up for our next budget or operating budget, maybe this is an opportunity to say, hey, I think we're good and we can cut this in half and stop where we are.
Now, this is part of this contract, so I don't know that's already underway, so.
So I can talk about it contractually, and then we can talk about it in terms of level of service. Contractually, because of the issues that occurred, the contractor understands if we terminate and they walk away from it at this point. In other words, we pay him for the work completed and we say, we don't want you to finish the contract. From staff's perspective, we know that there's work that needs done with our stormwater system, and so we're recommending that we continue with the work. Of course, it's your decision.
Yes, and I just want to also take a minute to acknowledge too, I mean, when you don't clean the pipes, what is, what ends up happening is a backup, right? And so when we do, and so I know we've heard from residents that have shared that their system is being backed up into their basement, and it's not our road, it's not our infrastructure, but that could happen with our infrastructure. So the, you know, the cleaning and lining of our stormwater infrastructure is critically important. And of course, the next conversation will be levels of service because it is a board's decision if you want to maintain that level of service. But I just want to acknowledge that you could, you absolutely could change the direction of which the township has committed to cleaning the pipes. But it's not, it's not just cleaning them that, you know, when we're extracting the solids and per DEP requirements, we have to take those solids to the transfer station. It's because of them needing cleaned, so.
So I would ask, if this was changed, would that affect the next item? We're talking about the contract for liner, or are they unrelated?
It's the same contractor, and the, some of the same reasons exist why the other contract didn't get done, but they are separate contracts.
Okay. But would those pipes, would that lining be able to be done without the fulfillment of this cleaning?
When we line the pipes, we do, we pick pipes that have been cleaned. However, they do require another light cleaning, but that light cleaning isn't included in the pipe and the cost of the pipeline.
So that contract would then be maybe changed a little bit depending on what we do?
There, you can look at them independently.
Okay. Okay. Matt, did you follow up on that?
I guess my last question here, the remaining pipes that have to be done, were these prioritized pipes or were these, you know, if so, how were they prioritized?
Yes, so we've started with some of the older systems first, started with some of the galvanized pipes and areas that we've heard issues and concerns. And then the stormwater engineer pretty much manages that program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know where I started to go, Ren.
I'm ready to entertain a motion. You're ready to entertain a motion.
Any, did everybody comment that wanted to comment? Anything else? Okay, would someone want to make the motion?
Mr. Thompson moved that the Board of Supervisors moved to approve a budget amendment if needed for Contract 2023-C5 to be completed in the amount not to exceed $91,424.55.
Is there a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just want to say, from what I'm reading, I really appreciate the contractor kind of acknowledging that they made a mistake, cleaning it up, and working with the township staff to apologize and get right. So thank you, contractor. Yes.
All right, there's no other discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move to number nine. This discussion for consideration to amend the level of service as indicated in Contract 2023-C3 cured and placed pipelining or amend allocation of financial resources for Fund 20. And we'll go back to Mr. Modricker.
Okay, thank you. In 2023, the township also awarded a contract for pipe lining. This would be Contract 2023-C3. In this case, knowing that the work wouldn't get completed, staff did approach the board, and there was an appropriation of $300,000 to cover work that we expected would need to get done this year. Unfortunately, even though the contractor ordered the liners and mobilized because of these other issues, while they started some of the work, including that light cleaning, none of the liners actually got installed. So in this case, to continue with the level of service that was outlined when the stormwater fee was established, we're asking the board to approve an allocation of funds in the amount indicated in the motion to allow all of the work to be completed. And I can answer questions.
Thank you. Okay, we can start with questions and discussion again. And I'll start with Patty. Patty, do you have any questions on this?
I do not.
Thank you. Jeremy? Matt?
Very similar comments to what I just made. Again, with the lining and $159,000, I don't know, but this doesn't enter into the whole notice to cure and the fact that the contractor resolved it. I'm wondering too, this contractor with this, again, the cause of the issues was just late supply chains, et cetera, for that?
Why they didn't mobilize more timely, I can't answer. You know, they'd made commitments but didn't get here, probably based on their schedule. They may have also had a delay in ordering and having the liners supplied on their end, but I'm not certain what those were. Because of the issues that we're faced here, the contractor again would understand if we walk away from this. However, they have ordered all the liners, and the liners have a significant cost and a shelf life. If it weren't for the issues I described earlier and we terminated a contract, we'd probably be responsible for some of those fees because we had them under contract. But because of the issues, I don't think that would be something that we have to contend with. But I do believe that I would say the fair thing to do is to allow them to complete the work. But that could only be done by reallocating, you know, the additional funds that, for the work that wasn't completed.
Thank you. And I think, I would love to say, let's save $159,000, but I also have seen in local, other local municipalities where they've maybe not made good on their contracts, where others have been shied away from doing business with the township, et cetera. So because of those reasons, I would absolutely be for, you know, going ahead and allocating this money. So, yeah, we're good for our word.
Amari?
Can you walk me through the timeline and the math with this? I apologize that you guys all have this context, but can you walk me through it, please?
Yeah, let me do the math first. Okay? So the contract amount, $481,500. Tonight, we approved a pay estimate for work completed on the consent agenda, and this would be for the light cleaning and the work they did in advance of getting the pipes lined. So that's $22,011. That's going to leave you with $459,489. Subtract the $300,000 that was already allocated, and that leaves you a balance of $159,489. So that's the math.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Why the delta between the budget allocation and today, the 159, 489?
Yeah, that's the balance remaining to complete.
Yeah, I get it, the subtraction. I'm asking why? Why did we subtract 159, 489 from an allocation perspective?
So I think I might be able to provide some insight here. So the idea was that prior to the incident happening in December, that the contractor would have completed $159,000 worth of work up to December 31st, 2023. However, because they demobilized while working on the contract, the pipe cleaning, they had a commitment to ensure that the incident does not happen again, and they demobilized and did not pursue work for either of the two contracts with the township. So as a result of however many days from the day the incident happened to December 31st, those were days that they were unable to perform the work to complete the contract. So I guess one way that I'll say again is that $150-some thousand of work didn't get completed, that staff anticipated it to get done. I think, you know, conversations Mr. Modricker and I have had to try and, you know, avoid this in the future is certainly, you know, revisiting that, you know, the plan. And so he and I are prepared to get these contracts released much earlier in the year to avoid these types of incidents in the future. It's not ideal. The incident was certainly not ideal. I think moving forward, staff has done, you know, we've done, we've done a good job of providing the board with an option in terms of, does the board want to allocate funds to support the completion of this contract in its entirety? And if not, then we'll proceed in a different direction.
Okay, so we're not really talking about, what we're talking about here is the lining that's already been ordered. Will it all get installed?
Correct.
Right.
So they may, you know, drop off some rolls of lining, whatever, however it's bundled at our back, back of the store in the warehousing or something? Because we would, right, they would just say?
No.
They would keep it?
Well, it is, it's cured with an ultraviolet light, and it has a shelf life. So you have to install it with specialized equipment and then cure it with specialized equipment, which we don't own, so we wouldn't be able to use it.
Okay.
Yeah, unlike stormpipe, which we could use, right? If it was to install a stormpipe.
Okay. And then timeline is, we left this $481,500 contract when?
Mid-year.
So around June?
Somewhere, mid-year, second, third quarter.
Okay. And that was back to the mobilization question, that they didn't quite mobilize quickly enough, and then we thought they would get done. And then is it, was it appropriate? I guess the last question, was it appropriate in December to demobilize? I think you said that they demo, or the manager said that they demobilized and did nothing to do the cleaning versus continue on and get work done, and now we're in this kind of?
So because of the issue that occurred, it was actually the CEO of the company that owns this company that put a moratorium on the work when he realized there was an environmental concern, because he was very concerned about that environmental concern and his relationship with DEP and the township and whatnot. So they had their own team of internal lawyers and consultants investigate the issue and then provided training to their people at the corporate level to ensure that this wouldn't happen again. And so we have assurances at the highest level that when they move forward, And so we have assurances at, at the highest level that when they move forward, it's going to be done properly. And again, apologies for the, the delays and issues and hardship that it's caused the township.
So it was appropriate to demobilize, or could they have lined something else? Or were they, that 150 that they were going to use to line, was that also in the same area as where the environmental issue happened?
Wasn't in the same area, but it was the same contractor. So they made the decision to stop work based on the issue that was at hand.
Yeah, so we feel pretty good about, I mean, there's been some, a lot of time going back and forth with the contractor and negotiating, kind of at this point. I think that the contractor took an honorable move in terms of taking full responsibility and then taking all the measures to ensure that that incident doesn't happen again. Those, those environmental concerns really raise the flag and bring attention to these types of issues to ensure we don't have that again. So we'll do our best to try and answer any other questions. But, but the board, absolutely, it's within the Burke Board's purview to determine if you want to allocate the funds for this, for this contract award. And if, and if you don't, then the staff, you know, will be able to proceed with what funds are allocated.
Right. I'm trying to do the best I can to answer your questions in the time we have on an issue that we've been working on for many hours. So I'll do my best.
Appreciate it. So, yeah, so that's what we were, you know, we had expected 159-ish thousand dollars worth of work to be completed, so we carried over the 300,000. I guess to Matt's point, you know, my, my feeling is it's a contract that we were already invested in, and, you know, I'd like to see it completed, but, you know, this is a board of five, so. So if there's no other discussion, I'll look for someone to make a motion.
This is Matt, I'll make a motion that the board supervisors move to approve an allocation of funds in the amount not to exceed 159,489.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will send that motion, Mr. Thompson.
All right, any other discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will move to item number 10. Discussion of supplemental agreement for final design of pollutant reduction plan or PRP improvements to Beaver Branch, and we'll go back to Mr. Modricker.
KCI was here with the stormwater engineer, provided a presentation to you on this subject meeting or two ago. They were awarded the professional services agreement for the preliminary design, and that, that is what the presentation was for. Tonight, you're being asked to allow the township manager to sign a supplement to that professional services agreement to allow KCI to complete the final design, which would be the next step. So it would be the final design, the permitting, construction support to allow the PRP project on Beaver Branch to move forward. The supplement that they submitted was in the amount of 94,780.
All right, thank you. And let's see, we could go ahead and start with a motion on this. Someone would care to make that?
Madam Chair, I move to approve an allocation of funds in the amount not. Sorry? I move to give authorization to township manager to sign a supplement to an existing professional services contract with KCI in the amount not to exceed 97,780 to perform the final design permitting and provide support during the bidding and construction of the project.
And is there a second?
Mrs. Patty, a second.
All right, discussion or questions on this? Seeing, and this is what we had budgeted. This was in a line item we had budgeted for this project.
It is within the budget. And in fact, the budget included the design of a section of Slab, Caber, Ron and Beaver Branch, and so we're doing it for less than the budgeted amount because it's just one section.
All right, any other discussion on this? And seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And we'll move to discussion on the Sklo Library seat, and we'll go to the manager for that item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief review, with an update on the effective December 31st, 2023 Half Moon Township. As, as many of you may know, is no longer part of the joint articles of agreement for the Sklo Center Region Library. And so this creates a vacancy on the Sklo Library Board of Trustees, which will be filled by one of the remaining participating municipalities. The COG Director has provided a few options as listed there in the agenda for the board, for the board's consideration. It's my understanding that other managers have also added this to the agenda for the elected officials to be able to weigh in with some comments and feedback. I'll just acknowledge that in the past, Ferguson Township had withdrawn, and, and the seat for Ferguson Township was not permanently given to another municipality, which allowed for us to return after being able to work through some of the issues that were on the table a decade or so ago. And so I would just offer that, that information as you have your discussion.
All right, thank you. So thoughts on this? We can start over here with Jeremy.
Yeah, thinking through this, kind of like the idea of rotating the seat. Another idea that I thought of, and this might not be negotiable, but would that seat still be filled by a Half Moon Township resident, just not given voting power since the township's not paying the plate anymore, so to say? You know, it's unfortunate what happened in Half Moon Township, but it would have been nice if we could have had opportunities to possibly had prevented this. But I would imagine there are still going to be Half Moon Township residents that will utilize the library, just unfortunately, they don't have those benefits that they once had.
Yep. All right. Patty?
Thanks, I'm sorry, did you say, who came up with these, these recommendations?
Uh, thank you, I didn't, you know. I appreciate you asking that question. I mentioned the Center Region Executive Director, Eric Nordenberg. However, I should, I should acknowledge that he had conversations with Lisa Collins, the Executive Director of Sklo Library. So it's my understanding that it was a collaborative discussion, and they were identifying options that they wanted to float with the municipality. So the options as presented are what Sklo Library, in collaboration with the Executive Director have.
Thank you, and I think one time I had asked, is there some reason why it wasn't mentioned that maybe Scazdy couldn't have that seat?
Yeah, this is a suggestion.
We can certainly present what's the, you know, what's been shared with the library for consideration. I think this is actually going to go in front of general forum for an official vote, so you'll see this as part of your general forum discussion.
Great.
Okay, okay, yeah, I would just recommend that rather than do the rotation or things like that, just Scazdy.
Thoughts, Matt?
I like that.
Yeah, Amari, you like the, the Scazdy rep?
I do, but I think they're all good options. If somebody wants to serve on a board, we should let them serve.
Yeah, that's kind of how I feel. I, I guess I'm leaning toward having the library board fill it, because I want, I'm hesitant to reassign that seat, hopeful that Half Moon would rejoin the library program. So that's, you know, if it's reassigned to, it had discussed College Township, or Harris, or rotating, or assigned to Scazdy, then they'd have to expand their board to let the member municipality back on. So I guess I'd be looking to maybe have the library board fill it, but I, I don't think there's a, really a bad option there, is I guess how I'll say it. So if they feel that College or Harris deserves to have another seat, I'd say, take that on separately and, and look at expanding the board to allow them a second seat, so. It'd be my thought. But you just wanted us to have some general discussion, knowing that it's going to come up to the general forum and?
Yes, it is my understanding that it's coming to general forum, but, you know, I will take your comments and share them with the Executive Director and ask him to provide an update, either through the general forum or with the elected officials through COG.
Okay, right, and it might come back to us. I'm not exactly sure how that, how that would move forward, so, okay, interesting. All right, anything else on that? Okay, so we can move to communications to the board. Anything to share? I had the communications on CADA that I had mentioned during that discussion, and I thought they were all well represented by those folks that came. Anything else?
I too had the communications with CADA.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. All right, I'll just point out a couple of calendar items. We have a coffee and conversation at Bayleville Community Hall on January 20th, and there is a Nixon Road paving and Science Park Road Sandy Drive Traffic Signal Public Open House on February 6th, and a number of other items that are all on our website calendar. And if there is nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
I'll second, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Patty.